Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us. It is now 2:00 PM. I am calling the meeting of the County Council Committee of the Hold to Order. And of course, this will be via video conferencing for those constituents who are listening in. We are going to discuss the St. Louis County Rental Assistance and the COVID-19 Vaccination Plans with the Department of Human Services as well as the Department of Public Health. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Days? Councilmember Clancy? Councilmember Dunaway?
Present.
Councilmember Fitch? Councilmember Webb? Councilmember Tracus?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
I believe Councilwoman Clancy just appeared.
Yes, are you all able to hear me okay?
Not, it's very light, very mute.
Is this better?
Yes.
Okay, point of order, Councilwoman Days?
Certainly.
As you know, Councilwoman, I continue to object to your assertion that you are the Chair of this body, as does our own legal counsel. If you wish to preside over today's meeting, go ahead so that we can continue county business with as little interruption as possible, but I do need my continued objection to be reflected into the record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, please note that objection.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Days?
I'm sorry?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Tracus. I want to concur and join in Councilwoman Clancy's continuing objections. Until the court rules, it's inappropriate to proceed in this manner, but so be it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please note those objections.
Yes, ma'am.
The committee takes official notice of and admits into evidence all of the St. Louis County ordinances and resolutions. Today, we are going to be discussing the rental assistance program. We're going to be also talking about the vaccine dissemination, the plans for both of those activities. There's a lot of consternation in the community about how this is being done, where it's being done, and a lack of information generally. So with that, I guess we will start with Human Services. The Director Andrea Jackson Jennings will make a presentation, and I do believe that she has sent us a PowerPoint previously so that we could review that, and I do appreciate that, Director Jennings. So please proceed. Good afternoon. As stated, I am Andrea Jackson Jennings. I am the Director of Human Services, and I have with me today Dr. Yusuf Skoggan. And as most of you are aware, the Department of Human Services is responsible for providing a full array of programs and services to the constituents of St. Louis County, including the Kathy J. Wyman Shelter, Community Development. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Community Development, Homeless Services, the County Youth Program, Veteran Services, Workforce Development, as well as the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. But for the purposes of today, Dr. Skoggan and I will be presenting the St. Louis County CARES Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Next slide, please. That is the agenda that we will be following today. And then at the end, we will have an opportunity to answer any questions. Next slide. So the Emergency Rental Assistance Program created the need for us to identify individuals with expertise in assisting to ensure that this process is seamless and that we are very transparent. So we created an ad hoc committee, and before you are the list of those individuals that are participating. Next slide, please. We'll start with a little bit of background information. We are referring to the Emergency Rental Assistance Program as the ERAP. And on December 27th, 2020, Congress passed and the President signed the Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2021, which provided $25 billion in emergency rental assistance through the Coronavirus Relief Fund. State, county, and governments can use these funds to assist families experiencing COVID-19-related financial hardships by providing emergency rental and utility payments and other related services to preserve housing stability. However, mortgage payments are not covered under this program. The U.S. Treasury will oversee and administer the new rental assistance program to the state and local governments, and will allocate funds to each state. Cities and counties with more than 200,000 residents can also request a direct allocation from the Treasury. Funds generally are available through December 31st of 2021. The program is flexible on how jurisdictions can operate, but there are some requirements. Next slide, please. Eligibility for Available Assistance. Households are eligible for emergency rental assistance provided through the COVID Relief Package if they meet the following criteria. One, all more individuals qualify for unemployment benefits or experience a reduction in household income. The household can demonstrate a risk of homelessness or housing instability, and household income is below 80% of their AMI. However, jurisdictions must give priority to applicants with household incomes below 50% AMI or with household members who are unemployed at the time of the application. Eligible households may receive up to 12 months of assistance plus an additional three months if the county determines the extra months are needed to ensure housing stability. Next slide, please. The State of Missouri Overview. Missouri has received an allocation from the last COVID-19 package of approximately $407 million. A minimum of 55% can be allocated to the state entity, and a maximum of 45 could go to the local jurisdictions. The Missouri Housing Development Corporation, MHDC, is the state that is in need for emergency rental assistance program. MHDC voted to use the state assistance for housing relief program to administer the ERA funds. Approximately 200, I'm sorry, approximately $324 million with a 2.4% cap on administrative costs. So to the right, you will see those jurisdictions and the allocations that were made. Next slide, please. So I'll turn it over to Yusuf, who will take it from here.
Yeah, and thank you, AJ. Thank you, Council. Again, I'm Yusuf Skoggan, and we have been involved in this activity since its inception. The CARES Act, humanitarian funds certainly did provide certain supports for our community, approximately $7 million was provided, and I'll talk a little bit about that and also piggyback on some of the things that AJ spoke to just earlier. Looking at just generally the program framework for what we're executing. So ultimately landlords can apply for these resources on behalf of their tenants, and tenants can apply directly. This is to facilitate a seamless process in ensuring that those households who are resistant to engaging with organizations are able to also receive that assistance. We are going to issue an RFP in a short timeline. Actually, we're projected to do so tomorrow. And that RFP will look for a third-party administrator to help us through this process. We'll work with the county to ensure that both our local implementation, as was afforded under the humanitarian piece last year, is connected with what we are resourcing moving forward. As AJ mentioned on a previous slide, St. Louis County was one of the eight counties in Missouri that are eligible to opt-in to administer their own resources. Seven counties chose to do so. St. Louis County, being the largest county in Missouri, is going to receive approximately $29.7 million. St. Louis County does make up 16% of the state's population. And so for those who like to crunch the numbers, the distribution of resources to St. Louis County that we're receiving does not match up with our population. And so that is certainly a concern for us, and one to ensure that the residents of St. Louis County have access to the additional approximately $36 million that St. Louis County residents should be eligible to apply for. We have a number of individuals who will need that assistance, so we'll talk about that a little bit as well. But these resources can cover rent, rental arrears, utility assistance, and other support such as case management and legal assistance to ensure that these households remain stable. And eligible expenses, of course, as AJ mentioned, include mortgage. So mortgage is not included in this round of funding. Certainly, Congress has instituted a number of forbearance policies, et cetera, that do help landlords, but this one is not allowed for mortgage assistance at this time. Next slide, Chris. Additionally, we, from a third-party administrator standpoint, what do we expect for them to do? Is to help us with the design and the marketing of this. Certainly, the last round with the CARES Act outreach was a key, key element. We had quite the following of individuals reaching out for the support, but we want to ensure that that is even more robust this time around. So our third-party administrator will assist in that fashion. Assist us with the application process and also the referring and tracking and the documentation that will be necessary to ensure that the community is aware of what is happening with these vital resources. Next slide. One of the things we wanted to ensure that we did in thinking through the taking on of these substantial amount of resources is ensuring that what happened under the prior humanitarian program that we took into account the feedback from organizations. The humanitarian fund actually contracted 26 organizations, 24 of which provided direct assistance to households. And so we polled those organizations to ask them what were things that could have been done better, what worked well, et cetera. And so that feedback is really informing how we are designing this program moving forward. But this kind of gives you a top line as to who and how many were supported during this last round of CARES Act dollars. So through the end of December, there were over 5,000 applicants, and those applications were vetted through a centralized portal that then assigned them to the organizations that we funded. Those organizations worked with those households to acquire the necessary documentation to ensure payment to the landlord or utility provider to remain stable. Over $3 million was reported in the United System, which is a, the United System is a database that the United Way coordinates with to ensure that the collection of what was actually happening with these households, appropriate referrals and tracking of those referrals were done. And the average amount of money per household was a little north of $1,900 per household to support those families. Next slide. So this gets into what I was mentioning earlier, the partner-agency feedback. And this really kind of is in a nutshell what was really important to the providers that were funded. And that was ensuring that the process was streamlined, was easy to understand, it was consistent, and that the process was standardized. We wanted to make sure that we account in the future for those non-English-speaking families as they are also some of the most difficult-to-reach households. We do have a growing Hispanic and other populations in St. Louis County, and we want to make sure that we are accountable for their needs as well. We want to make sure that people have an ability to access both because they're aware of it and how to handle those clients. And so we want to make sure that that's consistent across the board, that's the feedback that is provided. And most importantly, as is bold in the last highlight, and that is more resources. And certainly, this does bring more resources to our community. Approximately four times as much money directly administered by St. Louis County for this effort. Next slide. So from a program implementation standpoint, certainly, we want to make sure that the council is aware of the process by which we are going to undertake all of this and where we are in this strategy. And so we did talk about making sure that we were recognizing community needs. And so that was a key first element in outlining how we frame much of our work. Of course, the Department of Human Services is the key department for helping to usher much of this work along. It makes more than enough sense because we have been involved in this work as it was disseminated under the humanitarian fund, and we want some continuity there. And I'll just kind of go down. I'll let people on the council review this at your leisure. But ultimately, we want to get to a point, as will be issued on the next slide, Chris, to this very day of tomorrow, and that is to issue the RFP. So we want to make sure that that gets out, we get those submissions, we review that application, and we designed the program in a way that executes and moves this along efficiently. We know that people have been suffering and are still in a state of limbo, and we want to make sure that these resources are made available to households and landlords as soon as possible. Next slide. These are some additional links, just as background subject matter, around the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. And ways in which we should be thinking about this issue and how might this help us understand how it's executed in our community? If you have specific questions about the ERAP program, some of these links will help, I think, answer some of that. But otherwise, we'll be open to providing any answers to questions that may be waged.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions from the council members? Any questions from the council members at this time?
Councilwoman Days?
Just one second. Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes, I was going to wait and see if anyone else had anything before I spoke, but I'll go ahead. I, you know, the bad news is that this pandemic continues. The good news is we appear to be getting more efficient and smarter about deploying resources. And you kind of undersold, I think, a little bit, Yusuf, some of the really great collaboration that you and this Human Services Department have engaged in with partners across the region. I can really see that in what you just shared with us. One difference I noticed in this time around in terms of the aid that you all are figuring out how to distribute is that payments will go directly to landlords who apply for it. And I think that that's really important. It makes a lot of sense because it gets money to landlords quicker so they can more quickly have access to their income streams. But also, it takes a burden off of the tenants, who we know are faced with so many multiple burdens as probably mostly vulnerable low-income people. So I know for a fact that that was, that change was made as a result of the collaboration and conversations and engagement you've had across the community. So I just wanted to give you guys some kudos for that and ask if there's anything else that you all have really adjusted based on your collaboration and engagement with partners.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clancy. Certainly, the work that we do, and AJ could speak to it better than I. The work that we do, you know, it's sort of a thankless job, but we appreciate the remarks. Certainly, when you're in the midst of dealing with the ever-changing dynamics, you're just thinking about getting the work done. So I would just put that out there from the beginning. When it comes to adjustments that we've made, the good thing about what we instituted as programmatic framework initially really aligns with what the federal government now sees as appropriate. And so I'll just go back a little bit on that. The initial income guidelines were centered around 80% of AMI, as outlined by our internal income limitations. That was not federally mandated, but there was no mandate on income guidelines previously. There were other communities in Missouri that went up to 150% of AMI or even greater. That, we did not believe would allow for a targeted approach to the most in need in the community. And considering how much money we had available, we wanted to make sure that every dime was directed in that fashion. Additionally, there were, we've engaged a number of groups, Housing and Court Call groups, a number of organization advocacy groups across the region to ensure that other feedback around mitigating any sort of illegal evictions is also occurring. So we had a document in place from the beginning that if any household landlord received assistance, they could not proceed with eviction. Not many other counties in Missouri had such a document in place. However, we did strengthen it even for this deployment. So we look forward to that helping to address that issue. As many know, the moratorium is helpful, but there are illegal evictions that we're seeing about in the community, and we want to make sure that that's addressed. So those are just a couple of things around the feedback that we've learned to ensure that this is executed even more effectively.
Thank you. That's the end of my questions.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Hart?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Dr. for your presentation. Couple of questions. How much money does, I missed the slide where it said how much money St. Louis County will get?
$29.8 million.
Okay, that, you said it was, what would be your definition of a stable family or unstable as it pertains to qualifying for this relief?
So these resources are focused on those who need rental assistance and utility assistance. So as the income and other criteria stipulates, a person needs to suffered some sort of loss of income or has incurred some additional expenses associated with COVID management. So as defined by the federal government, that is how we would define households in need. And so that is the direction in which we are going to focus. Certainly, there are some hotbeds in our community in which there's more concentrated poverty in those who are already struggling. We are looking at unemployment data and working through the workforce development provision of the Department of Human Resources to ensure that that information is being taken into consideration and targeted outreach is done in that thing. So I think when we put a multitude of these elements together in addition to some partnership data with Washington University that has been helpful in understanding both pre-existing and what is currently taking place within our community, that will allow us to more centrally focus on those households that are not stable.
Have you targeted certain ZIP codes? Has that been identified as of yet?
In the past, we've done that with the CARES Act resources certainly, and we anticipate the same this round as the data has not significantly shifted as it relates to who is most impacted. And so when we're looking at the unemployment data, when we're looking at pre-existing and current situations, much of that really aligns itself with the same targeted areas.
How far back do they have to be in arrears on their rent to qualify? One month, five months, six months?
Yes, it does not require that you be behind by a specific number of months in order to receive assistance. But if you are behind or potentially unstable as a result, as many are aware, a landlord can file for eviction after you're behind by essentially one month or a few days. And so we don't want households to be in a situation in which they have to be behind three, four, or five months before they can access these resources. It is in everybody's best interest, and we can maximize the use of these resources if we're able to avoid litigation and filing lawyer fees. So I think we will execute in that fashion so that no matter where you are in that spectrum, that you can be supported.
Will priority be given to folks that are already in eviction status at this point?
Certainly, certainly, emergency situations are accounted for. So we have worked with Judge Burton, the presiding judge for the county courts, in addressing some of the issues. As many are aware, with the moratorium in place, it certainly eliminates eviction execution. However, it does not preclude landlords and attorneys from filing for eviction. And so we are monitoring that, and we will continue to do so. We will be working to ensure that that worst-case scenario, it gets to the courts, that we are addressing those needs as well.
You are going to use an outside firm to manage the paperwork and all the things necessary to identify those in need, or will this be done in-house?
Yeah, the RFP is seeking to have a third-party administrator that is able to centralize a lot of that and streamline it. And the RFP that will be released, I believe, tomorrow will further elaborate on that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else with any questions?
Yes, Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Webb?
Thank you. So Dr. Skoggan, my name is Shalonda Webb, of course, and I'm asking questions. It may be a little bit too much in detail, but just for clarification. In the program framework, it talks about the landlord or the tenant may apply for the assistance. What system are you using to ensure that there is not a duplication of an application and then ensure that both parties are communicated to? So there is not one hand knowing what out the other hand is doing and then any confusion caused by that?
Absolutely, absolutely. A great question, and I haven't had the opportunity to meet you, Councilwoman Webb, so congratulations on your win, and I appreciate the work that you're doing there. Certainly, with the first assistance package, there was a need to make sure that there was centralized application. And so that will continue to ensure that duplication is not an issue, not just from our internal perspective, but additionally, as we look to make sure that county residents have access to the dollars that will be administered at the state level. State dollars and local dollars are the same similar dollars, right? So we have to figure out a way to communicate around who's receiving what, when, and where. So that's kind of one key element. So that's kind of one key element in the process that is centralized will help to ensure that that does take place. What, your second question really was speaking to general outreach and making sure that those who do receive assistance are also communicated. So that was kind of part and parcel to Councilwoman Clancy's earlier question about an additional element of consideration that has been changed. We did get feedback from the community that some organizations were making payments to landlords on clients' behalf, and those clients weren't necessarily receiving the receipt, the document that stipulated that payment had been made under the bill. And so that is another programmatic requirement that is being changed to ensure that there's broad communication around the payment distribution, and so that if there is a future filing of some sort, let's say six months down the line, that those landlords aren't able to get more than they are due, and that those tenants are able to substantiate the payments that have been made under the bill.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that detailed response and also learning from our, having our lessons learned from the previous packets. So thank you again for your service.
Anyone else with any questions? Okay, I have a couple here that kind of want to go over with you, both of you, AJ and Youssef, because, and then let me just ask, first of all, this program framework, is this your framework? Is this a framework that's handed down from the federal government, or is this what you put together in terms of how you think this should be implemented?
Yeah, the framework that's been provided is a compilation of the both, what the federal guidelines outline, and then what we have determined has been effective through our experience of running the humanitarian fund. And for many who may not be aware, the department and the homeless division in particular runs and operates similar programming year-round outside of a pandemic. So there is an opportunity here to use best practices as have been learned over several years in collaboration with the new federal guidelines to make sure that that framework is effective and efficient. AJ, you might want to add something?
Yeah, I was just going to add that because of the lessons learned, Councilwoman Days, that we modified and edited this process so that we could ensure that all the feedback that we received from our partnering agencies was included.
Okay. If I look down at the ineligible expenses, is that from you or is that from the federal government?
That is also from the federal government.
Government.
Okay. All right. I'm looking at, and I'm asking the questions because I'm looking at telecommunications services that were not included in that. However, you're asking our schools to do virtual learning, and you can't do virtual learning if you don't have this kind of telecommunications system, so the internet. And so that's, I guess, why I'm asking that question, as well as, you know, your transportation costs and those kinds of things are not included in this. And if those are not, then that is another barrier to people being able to function. So I guess this is just a compilation of both of those. Did you have a third-party administrator for the previous monies that you used, the humanitarian? Did you have a third-party programmer there?
We did not. We utilized, it was a collaboration between a few departments in St. Louis County's government to execute on these activities.
So it was done in-house, essentially?
Exactly.
And you found that that was not sufficient, or that was insufficient, or what?
I don't believe it was an issue from the legislature.
No, no, no. Go ahead, Youssef, but I was just going to add that it also became a capacity issue. You know, we were asked, we had to take on all of the additional roles and responsibilities on top of our day-to-day. So when you don't have a full complementary of staff, it just became a little burdensome. So I think that across the board, if you do a survey on all the departments that have been intimately involved in the CARES Act, they would all agree that a third party would probably be the best, the best way to manage it moving forward.
Okay. I'm looking at your slide on housing stabilization and homeless prevention data, and this is from your humanitarian efforts. Is that correct? That this is, this is what was previously done? So if I looked at the agencies that you had and the number, I guess that's the number of people that were accepted or households accepted by the agencies, is that correct?
Correct.
And so that leaves about a fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred people gap or household gap there. What happened to those people?
Yeah, and that, I think that really speaks to the limited resources that were available at that time. So there was a challenge, and that was approximately seven million dollars total. And so we deployed those resources with our community organizations to the best ability. That's why the folks who will be first in line, and there's this continuity of service around these new dollars, those folks will be addressed with these new resources. And the great thing is that the criteria that we implemented before aligns itself with the new federally mandated dollars and criteria so that there is a seamless process to follow in that way.
So now, if I heard you correctly, you are, AJ, we got two twenty-nine point eight million that we received previously from, or it was to address this thirty-nine fifty-three number. Is that correct?
No. So the twenty-nine point eight million dollars is the new one that was just awarded, subject to the legislation that was passed on December twenty-seventh.
Okay, so this is new money?
Yes.
Okay. What did you receive previously from the humanitarian? I didn't, I don't remember. I didn't get that one.
It was just shy of seven million dollars. So this is about four times that amount.
Right. So if you got seven million and looks like you spent three point five, that's what I'm looking at. You spent three point five, so there's a significant gap there. What would happen to the rest of that?
So all of the dollars have been spent here, so that report only includes those who were entering into the United's platform. We have a number of smaller organizations that were funded that are not included in that number, so the full seven million has been accounted for and has been delivered to those who needed it.
But you only have here a three point five million dollars that was spent. So where is that? I mean, as of twelve twenty, am I reading it correctly?
So that report is subject to the end of the year, which was December thirty-first. That only includes those who entered into the United's platform, which is, which was twelve organizations, twelve of the twenty-six. So had other organizations who did not enter into that database that are not included in that dollar amount.
And why were they not entered into the database?
So those were the smaller organizations who, their capacity was focused on delivery of service to those households, and they had challenges entering in that data. They did upload that documentation to us separately, but it was not at the same time being entered into the United's platform.
So will it be, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, and that is, to your, to, I know what your follow-up is. Is, will this be a challenge moving forward? No, that is going to be a part of the RFP as well, is that they will be mandated, and we will select likely organizations or those who are facilitating this work that will be collecting data in a timely way. So we don't suspect that this will be a challenge moving forward.
Okay, it looks like you're setting up, I guess, kind of a new program to implement this new monies. Is that correct? I'm looking at the ten steps for program implementation.
Yes, that is, that is correct. It's just, it's essentially understanding what we've been doing thus far, taking into account organizational feedback, understanding the new dollars and the parameters under which we can operate those, marrying all of that together for program implementation with a third-party support.
The other question I have about follow-up with these organizations, I will, I'm going to share with you a constituent concern that I just received, and I know that these were, this was probably previous money, but still the issue is there, and I believe, did you utilize the Urban League?
The Urban League was a funded organization.
Yes.
Okay. The response that this person got from calling the Urban League was that there, there was no, there was no response. It did not allow you to leave a voicemail or connect to anyone in the future, or how to get back with people. That's the first thing. Did you, did you, did you contact with the Salvation Army?
Salvation Army.
They called the Salvation Army, and they said to call back next week when they thought that funds would be available. So obviously, their funds might be available, but again, it did not allow the person to even sign up or leave any information or any kind of, any way to get back with them. And this is coming directly from a constituent, and that's why I'm asking these questions. So, and then the United Way, we contracted with them, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, the United Way said that they are only providing rental assistance to individuals with HIV. Are you aware of that?
So these questions from these constituents, we certainly like to give further detail on them and address any concerns that are waged. Certainly, during the process of winding down the CARES Act dollars from last year, and when organizations were exhausting all of their funds, there may have been different circumstances at that time. Certainly, these new dollars, as we've reported on today, weren't approved until December twenty-seventh. So there is a possibility that those parties called during the time that, in fact, there weren't any additional dollars. As we had talked about before, the seven million dollars has been accounted for, but we look forward to these new dollars being able to follow up on some of those very concerns and households that are still in need.
So at this particular point, what should I tell this constituent?
They can call my office. I can give you, I think you have my phone number. You can call, ask their concern directly.
Yes. Councilwoman Days, whenever you have a concern such as the ones that you've just raised, feel free to reach out to myself or Youssef, and we will address those issues.
Okay, and I do appreciate that. My point is that when we have all the wonderful plans and is, if someone gets caught between the cracks, they fall between the cracks, and so those are the ones that I hear about. Everything else that's going fine, and, but we hear about the ones that did not get the services and did not get the support that they needed, and they are just as important as us, the other folks. So I just want to make sure that we're cognizant of that. And then the follow-up, who is the person that will be following up to the various organizations that will be receiving these dollars? Who is that?
That person has not been assigned yet, but it will be someone in this department.
Do you, do you have any idea of how often they will be following up? Is that something to, perhaps in the future? I just, I just want to know when I have to address my constituents, and so, maybe as well.
Yeah, historically, we've done a weekly check-in, but we can increase that if need be, but historically, it's been a post-check on a weekly basis.
Okay, weekly check-ins. Okay, well, that's all of the questions that I have. Any other councilperson with questions? Councilwoman Hart?
Yeah, a follow-up on a question for the doctor. You're going to go out for an RFP for a company that's going to manage this. What type of percent of this total are they going to take for themselves before it ever gets out to the people in the St. Louis County area?
Excellent question. So the great thing about these funds is it's very targeted. The federal government wants to ensure that ninety percent, again, no less than ninety percent of these dollars can have to be spent on rental assistance. So that is the main focus. No more than ten percent can be spent on administration. And we suspect a organization will have to be under that amount. I think AJ mentioned in the first part of the presentation that MHDC is hovering around two and a half or so percent administrative cost. And so we don't suspect that an organization would eat up all of the ten percent, as there are a number of activities that have to be engaged in this process. But I won't speak too much to that, but certainly there are parameters from the federal standpoint that give that guidance.
So that's ten percent total, meaning all the middle people that are between you and the resident can't exceed ten percent? Is that what you're saying?
Ten percent on administration. Now, in the ninety percent, there is an opportunity for ten percent of the ninety percent to be for case management. And so when we're thinking about some of organizational costs, sometimes that case management is included in that, but that will be included in the ninety percent, only ten percent of the ninety percent.
So if you have a, if you have an organization that's going to manage the program, can they take ten percent, and then they're given money to, say, a third party like United Way, can they take another ten percent before it ever hits the street?
No, there is a maximum of a ten percent. So let's say we round the total amount of money to thirty million dollars. There will be no more than thirty million dollars in administrative costs for this program as federally mandated.
You mean three million dollars? Ten, ten and thirty?
Three, three million.
Okay. And then you identified fifty-one thousand, or fifty-one hundred people in that one survey that may be a need. Is that a pretty accurate average number, or is there more of those?
So I would say this, that number is based upon how many folks actually applied in the United's platform last season, right? Many of them were assisted, but there are a number who are still on the waiting list. Just to give a little order of magnitude, the unemployment numbers that we show for St. Louis County, we have approximately, I believe it was twenty-one thousand or so who are in that category of having, having filed for unemployment benefits. So I think certainly while we have a decent number of folks who are on that list, we expect that there'll be significantly more individuals who will be seeking access to this resource. And to the earlier point, if we just are, you know, kind of in the math business, we talked about how the previous dollars were seven million, and this is approximately four times that amount, right? And fifty-one hundred applied, but as I just mentioned, about twenty-one thousand are receiving unemployment benefits. So that's also about a four-time multiple, right? So if we just predict or project based upon some of those metrics, we certainly will need every dime. But I would say the, there's real likelihood that we'll need more and above the approximate thirty million dollars that we are receiving as a direct administration amount.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Any questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Webb?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Scroggins or Mrs. AJ, Mrs. Jennings, excuse me. My question is back towards those applicants. Out of the fifty-one hundred that applied for the original CARES Act or emergency funds, only half of them were actually selected. Is there any way or is there any plan for those who did not receive to get a priority? Because based upon whether it was the amount of funds we had or whatever reason they were not accepted, is there a way to prioritize them so they don't get deterred by saying, hey, I applied last time and I didn't get it, I'm not going to go apply again? So do we? So do we have that in the plan as well?
Absolutely. Uh, so there is a requirement for that continuity of service. Uh, those individuals will be prioritized. Uh, they will be first in line to receive the assistance. Uh, they have mostly been assigned to organizations who are aware and have been in contact with those households. It's just a function of the resources, uh, financial resources being available to help execute. Uh, so we certainly, uh, took that into account primarily uh, to ensure that those who had already expressed needs, uh, were not having to go through another process uh, as well as, uh, weren't falling through the cracks when their needs not being met.
And I think it's also important to mention, as Yusef, um, mentioned to you guys earlier, the state of Missouri is getting quite a bit of resources. And when you do the math, St. Louis County makes up 16%. However, we're only getting $29 million. So, um, for all of those who have relationships, as we know how important relationships are, um, it would be helpful that St. Louis County could have access to those additional dollars so that we can serve more of your constituents.
Yes ma'am. Thank you. I do have one clarification sir. Um, will we be reaching, when I say we the Department of Health or your offices be reaching out to those individuals? Or would they have to reach out to you? And I'm speaking of those who were denied the first time.
Uh, yes, they, they will be, there'll be direct outreach with those households. Absolutely.
Oh, that's good to hear. Uh, and then I have one more follow up. Um, in regards to the funding that was not, that was disseminated out, but was not a part of the United, United, uh, system? Will those funds, if we wanted to go back and get some information or background, could we get some type of report that said, okay, that other three point something million dollars went to these people? Is there some information that we can get if that is of interest to us?
Absolutely. While, while these organizations may not have submitted it into the Unidas platform, the same required data, uh, is, uh, being provided by those other organizations. So we can certainly provide that as well.
Thank you, sir. That is all my questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else with any other questions, comments? Thank you very much for this. I hope that you will follow up with those organizations that I mentioned earlier to see what kinds of, 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 uh, challenges they may be facing. Uh, because we certainly don't want any of us St. Louis County citizens to have to go through those kinds of, uh, uh, challenges to get, to get help. That would really, that would really, um, speak volumes for, for you and your department. I do appreciate this and, and, and making sure that, you know, we're not on the front page of the postal dispatch with, you know, people sitting on their porches and being evicted, even though we have the, these resources ready. Uh, I know that the rollout, I believe it's March. You're looking at the final rollout of March, I believe.
Yes.
There may be four people that sit together. So I do appreciate that. Uh, without any further ado, any other questions, last time, questions or comments? Thank you so much for the presentation. I do appreciate you sending this, uh, PowerPoint early enough so that I can have some questions formulated. I know the council members appreciate that as well. So thank you.
I'll also be following up with a 21-page document with an executive summary for some additional information for you.
Thank you. Sounds great. Thank you so much. We will now move to the Department of Public Health. Uh, Spring, who do you have with you?
Uh, Damon Broaddus is in the room with me today. Um, Dr. Dusset is on kind of a rotation.
Okay. If you're ready, you may begin.
Thank you. So, um, I'm really excited to talk about, um, some of the preparation that we've been doing uh, in, uh, in working towards our vaccine rollout. Uh, there are still a lot of constraints, um, and I want to make sure that I have the opportunity to, to speak to as many of those as I can, uh, today. So a little bit of our own agenda setting, some of the, the goals, um, that we're trying to get to. Uh, and what we currently have on details for all of our planning, the logistics and the supply, uh, issues. And then some of our, our next steps and questions as well as, as what we've done so far. So, uh, as we thought about, um, how to size sort of the scope of what DPH, uh, would and should be targeting uh, for the size of this, uh, we were looking at some of the information that like the new administration has put out towards their goals of 100 million shots in 100 days. And that feels like a, a huge aggressive target, uh, when you're looking at the entire country. So we looked at breaking that down, like what should we be, uh, beginning to aim for? And then getting up above in order to be able to be a real contributing force towards that. So, uh, if St. Louis were to try to hit that target, St. Louis County, uh, we would need to be doing 300,000 people in that same 100 days. Uh, that would mean that we would need to be vaccinating for all of St. Louis County, about 21,000, uh, residents, um, every, every week. Uh, and then, um, what would be St. Louis County's portion of that as the health department? As opposed to the hospitals or FQHCs, other pharmacies and providers that are also vaccinating um, and receiving a lot of vaccine, that's at least getting started on vaccine to do so. Uh, and that puts a DPH target. So let's say that a, a quarter of all of that, uh, is ours um, to, to make sure that we're responsible and ready for. Uh, so we set ourselves that first target of at least 5,000 vaccinations a week. Uh, and then expanding on that to just push and drive that forward so that we were focusing on as many people as possible as we get there. And so that's the target that we set for ourselves as the kind of infrastructure we wanted to start with. Uh, and then be prepared to build on that, uh, to be vaccinating even more people as, as quickly as we could. So in all of that, we set the, the goals for ourselves of the things that we need to remember that we must always do, uh, and how, uh, we are framing out like the, this, this operation and our operational goals. So the first and most important thing is that we vaccinate every St. Louis County resident who wants it. Um, but, uh, through that, we also cannot ever forget that we have to prioritize those at-risk and vulnerable populations, um, while advancing equity, uh, across, um, St. Louis County, um, in all of the ways in which we operate. Uh, and our, our goal here, in addition to this vaccination, people's health is that we want to make sure that we are reopening our economy, um, returning to normal uh, in a safe and responsible way, uh, with, with all speed that, that we can manage to, to maintain. So if we start with that first, um, piece about vaccinating every St. Louis County residents, there's a couple of objectives, uh, that we've set for ourselves within this space. Uh, and some of the things that we have to consider as we're doing it. So the first concerns eligibility, and this is where I also want to start to be clear about the things that St. Louis County does have control over, uh, and some of the things that we don't. So, uh, vaccine eligibility is set by the state. This is, uh, the information that everyone talks about as far as the tiers, the phases in the tiers. So we are in phase one. Uh, within that, there have been identified, uh, one tier one A, uh, which is our healthcare workers, um, and those residents who are in long-term care facilities. And then there is tier one, and I'll, I'll cover some more of this in a second, actually. So this is what we talk about when we talk about tiers. Those are the currently available, um, people who qualify for a vaccine. And those are set entirely by the state of Missouri. Um, and they do change, um, on a, on a regular basis with lots of additional details. Uh, but what DPH needs to do is build and support vaccination sites. So we have to have a wide variety of delivery. So we have to include our DPH clinics, uh, move towards mobile clinics, um, private enclosed points of dispensation or distribution, as well as public open ones as well, in as many varieties as possible in order to reach the public in all the ways in which, um, it's most appropriate to deliver care. Uh, they have to be accessible and that's why we have a variety, um, to make sure that we are thinking about weekends. We're thinking about evenings. We're thinking about mobility. We're thinking about size. Uh, each of those places, and we're thinking about geography. St. Louis is huge, um, geographically. And we have to make sure that we're, uh, we're trying to, to increase access, um, from a geographical perspective too. So those are some of the constraints that we've been thinking about. Uh, and then community outreach, people have to be aware of it. Uh, and then also feel like they can question it, um, and, and see, uh, how it's, it's moving and changing as we continue through this process. Uh, and there are some pieces of the outreach for awareness that we have control over. Um, and then sometimes there are pieces where there are changes at the state level or at the federal level. Um, but sometimes we have to go back and redo our communication and, and make sure that everybody stays updated uh, on the most recent information. That is probably one of the harder aspects of some of the stuff that we've been tackling, uh, lately. Um, and, uh, because we, we do have a lot of people to communicate to. So this is, as I was describing, are the current tiers. So the three blue tiers on the left of your screen are the people who are currently eligible, um, based on either their job, um, causes a certain risk of exposure or their medical condition causes an increased risk, both exposure or outcomes, um, that are, uh, that are more severe by catching COVID. And so this is our healthcare workers, um, and long-term care facilities, emergency response. Uh, that includes all of our public safety workers, um, fire EMS and others. And then the high-risk individuals based on either their age or, um, some aspect of their medical condition. So just to give us a sense for the size of those populations that are St. Louis County residents. So these are estimates that are based off of either, um, information from the health department where we talk about medical conditions or the industry data that is collected at the state level. So the state estimated that the healthcare worker population was between 50 and 75,000, um, as well as long-term care facility residents and staff. They also estimated that the population of the emergency response workers was about 10 to 15,000. They also estimated that in St. Louis County alone, the population for adults that are over age 65 or who are 18 to 65 with a high-risk medical condition is 390,000 people. So currently in the open available tiers of people who qualify in St. Louis County, there are more than 450,000 people who are potentially eligible for vaccines right now. And so the size of the population that is eligible, uh, is, is huge. It's, it's nearly half of our population. And then you can see this next tiers of what we're facing in, um, additional industries that the state is looking to protect. This is certainly where we would be talking about our educators, our, um, transportation systems, um, government workers, childcare, uh, communications and utilities, all kinds of other important industries to the infrastructure of St. Louis County. They are all on hold in tier three until the state makes that tier open and available, um, for, and eligible for vaccine. Uh, it is the responsibility of the department for us to, like, we, we have to be looking at building everything that we've got now, um, as well as looking at what we will need to be, uh, ready to do as those tiers open up. So we are operating right now as well as planning how to increase what we have and then also planning for what we will need as those additional tiers open. And then the additional, um, 200 to 350, almost 500,000 people that are in the phase two and phase three of the state's plan. So this is controlled by the state in terms of these tiers, but this is the size of the population for, for St. Louis County. So we have been pre-registering folks, uh, for about a month now. Um, and we are working to institute more communication with the folks on our pre-registration list. So we've been breaking this list down. We want to be transparent about who is reaching out to us so far, um, to get pre-registered. Uh, so these are people who are still left on our list as of yesterday. Um, and so we have been, uh, vaccinating and they, some people have been vaccinated by hospital systems or others. But we still have about 11,000 healthcare workers, um, who are in phase one A, um, who have not been vaccinated yet, uh, because they're not affiliated with a hospital system. So we've been trying to reach that group as well, especially since, um, as you can see, about 6,500 of them are also over age 65 or have a high-risk medical condition that they have identified as well. I will also say in this group that it was the state's intention, I want to talk about long-term care facilities really briefly. The state, um, made the list of long-term care facilities. Um, that was never communicated out, uh, to local jurisdictions. They worked directly with pharmacy partners who were assigned to provide direct services, uh, in vaccination to those long-term care facilities. That is not information that the county was privy to, uh, as part of that process. However, because we've been partnering with long-term care facilities, um, for a long time, we had a lot of communication channels set up. We have identified, uh, so far over a dozen. Um, and we have also, I know that some of you have reached out to us as well or your, um, aides have with other people that have reached out to you or to us or to the county executive's office who also said that they were not included in the state's list. We did not know that, um, prior to that. So we are adding them, um, to our list to see what we can do to set up the, a mobile option, uh, to go help, uh, in those facilities because they, they should have been covered in the state's original plan. Um, but they were not. I have elevated that to the state, um, on a couple of different occasions. Um, but they do not currently have an operational lift to, to be able to help that. So we put it on our list, uh, to be able to help those folks that are in senior facilities in St. Louis County who were, for whatever reason, not included in the state's original rollout. So we are working with them now. Uh, emergency responders, uh, we have worked really hard on this list as well, uh, and have already, uh, been vaccinated. Um, almost all of fire EMS is vaccinated, uh, and we vaccinated about a thousand, um, officers, uh, as well. And then we also partnered with the hospital system to put up a clinic, um, to help vaccinate the rest of the officers so that we could, uh, move more aggressively into that phase one B two. So there are currently 116,000 people registered with St. Louis County, uh, who are over 65 and another 58,000 who are currently registered with us, who, um, are 18 to 64 with a high-risk medical condition. There are another 70,000 individuals who have registered, um, who are in a later tier. We also have been changing, we originally allowed agencies to register. Um, so this is lower than our original estimates because we are actually working with a bunch of organizations that called and, and signed up and then signed up that they had 100 people at their office that they wanted vaccinated. We're actually working with them to actually list those 100 people individually, um, so that we can make sure that we're also prioritizing them by age, um, and not by just their, their workplace, but by their age and their, um, their high-risk status. So there are a lot of people in the St. Louis County registry. Uh, we are working to make sure that we are trying to communicate back to them, um, on a regular basis. Uh, we've been working with, uh, of course, the county older residence program and, and others to make sure that we are trying to help people who don't have digital access, um, and, and taking as many of those as possible. And we're also finding some more community partners to work with, uh, to, to do that as well. Uh, but that is, um, where the call volume and everything else is completely overwhelming. So we're adding to it almost every day, um, to continue to expand that out to, to be hearing and, and reaching people. So this is the landscape as of today, uh, for, um, the, the vaccine sites, uh, for St. Louis County. We are, uh, announce, are announcing today, uh, that, um, so the state of Missouri allocates the vaccine. Um, they allocate to us and then they allocate separately to hospital systems and others. So right now the DPH sites are, of course, are, um, a primary site right now is the John C. Murphy Clinic in Berkeley. Uh, and then, uh, we will start vaccinating our patients in North County, uh, in the South County Clinic and North Central Clinic, uh, soon. Uh, and we started vaccinating the high-risk, uh, residents in, um, the, the jail on Friday. We also, uh, the Florissa Valley, um, St. Louis Community College has been a great partner, uh, with us in this and is, is really partnering not only in terms of their, uh, site locations, but also, um, some of their health occupation students, uh, and others. Uh, and, uh, so Flow Valley will have, um, appointments for the public starting tomorrow. Uh, and then, uh, we will plan to bring, to build up, uh, Meramec as well. And Flow Valley is expandable from the amount that we're currently able to lift. So we'll, we'll be able to continue to grow that into a really persistent daily site. Uh, so far we also, we do have the option on additional sites that St. Louis Community College has. Uh, we will, uh, we have a number of sites that we have evaluated for potential outdoor drive-through sites, uh, as well as mobile pop-up sites as we move forward. And so, uh, we're keeping a list. Many people have reached out and offered us spaces and locations. And as we, uh, get more vaccine, as we move forward, uh, we will have a lot of opportunities to, to capitalize on the generosity of, of a lot of St. Louis residents and organizations. We also have that are also part of the DPH network, what we call our redistribution partners. We started, we've been working with fire EMS partners since day one of this emergency. So, uh, since we've. Uh since we first opened the EOC and declared this as an emergency, fire EMS have been there uh every day. Um I am the incident commander for public health, we have an incident commander for. Uh police and the EOC and one for fire EMS, so we've been planning this whole time, fire EMS departments. Uh for our local municipalities like really stepped up to the plate in this vaccination effort. Uh with staffing and with sites, uh paramedics can give um vaccinations, so. We have set up the appropriate cold chain infrastructure, they will operate on DPH's data collection scheduling and management system. We've done training for them, all of sort of the paperwork and documentation. Afton, Eureka and Melville, um so actually those the little dotted lines around those boxes can all go away as of today. Because all of them will be open to the public on Thursday. Um and so we'll be redistributing some of our vaccine to them. Uh to make sure that they can they can be operable and and they we have several more. Uh fire EMS programs that are in the process of either getting registered with the state. Uh or training or and thinking about how to set their site up, so we do a lot of onsite support with them. To make sure that they can do the cold chain management as well as all these other pieces. There are other providers, DPH is is not the the primary provider, we're not even the biggest of the providers in this, but but we are. A significant portion of what happens in our community, so uh the hospital systems um are the priority of the state. At this point for receiving vaccine and distributing it to the community, so Mercy, SSM, St. Luke's and BJC. Um and uh eventually pharmacies will be activated as well. Um and FQHCs, uh there are some FQHCs that have started in this process, I know Athenia and CareSTL. Um both have been doing well uh in this space and started to receive a little bit of vaccine. CareSTL in particular has been a very close partner with us. Um in this space and uh and will continue to to forge that partnership as we move forward to support them. Uh in that they don't operate on St. Louis County's uh DPH's infrastructure. Uh we just uh try to communicate with each other um about what it is that we're doing. Uh and then we try to keep track and communicate with what the other regional entities are doing as well. Um health departments and and other regional hospitals, um of course, so there is a DPH network. Um of the folks that that we are more directly coordinating all of the activities of, and then there are other providers in the community. Um it it is important to note at this point that the state is heavily prioritizing hospital systems as the primary delivery of all vaccine. Um in across the state, uh as the vaccine resources are are very limited. Uh but for DPH, um it is always uh our focus uh to be prioritizing at-risk and vulnerable populations. Um and and really pursuing equity in the work that we do. Uh and so we start by involving community voices, uh we've been doing that from the start, we still conduct regular. Uh focus groups and listening sessions, we talk and listen to um community stakeholders uh as often as we can. Um and they they feed in a sort of a a a pretty constant loop of things that they're hearing or things that they are not hearing. Um questions that we have and ideas uh that are generated through those processes so that we can continue. To adapt and modify what we're doing to to address constituent concerns as directly as we can. Uh we also, that helps us understand the needs of our vulnerable communities and. We always have issues, of course, in St. Louis that we know about um racial and socioeconomic disparities and how that plays out in terms of people's health. Covid has certainly um exposed a lot of that, we have um we have faced and acknowledged that as a reality in in many of our public health outcomes for years. Um in this covid vaccination process, there are additional um at-risk and vulnerable communities. Um that we are also making sure that we are hearing, we have had several conversations with um. Community representing organizations that represent people with disabilities and other functional needs. Uh we have uh continued to work with um immigrant and other communities that talk about translation needs. Um so that we can continue to try to translate our materials into as many uh languages as possible. So all those pieces are in process, they're they're not all lifted up and ready to go yet, but they have all been started and we. Uh regularly seek input from these groups, um certainly as we understand how our senior population is impacted. How the homebound um population, we have been talking about homeless populations and how to make sure that we can. Um uh be able to work with people and then and then then be able to get them back in for that second booster shot, which is really critical as well. It's important to us in all of this that we reduce barriers, most of what we hear. Uh when we talk to the community, aside from the questions and the issues of awareness is. But I don't have a paperwork for this, or I'm not sure what to do if I have insurance, or I don't have proof that I have. Um you know, a a serious heart disease, or um I don't understand like what my requirements will be for this process, so it's important for us to. Uh reduce as many of those barriers as possible, whether it's transportation and we've been working on. Uh helping people get transported to us as well as working on helping people, um helping us get to people who cannot come to us. Uh and uh the, like I said, the translation services and other things, so reducing those barriers is is critical. Uh and then also focusing resources in some of our high-needs areas, and and we've been doing that um from the beginning. Um and this talks about like our social vulnerability mapping, uh we've used this and I think we've talked about this many times and um from DPHs you've seen. Uh when we were doing cares oversight meetings and many other uh pieces, we looked at social vulnerability from the very beginning. Um at the health department, we are, we are very, very aware of where we uh so often see that your zip code is a. Is a primary determinant of your health outcomes and um we do see that playing out, and so these are zip codes that we have targeted. With this particular resources towards uh whether it was the funding for the cares money, PPE distributions. Um expanding access to mental and behavioral health services specific to those um zip codes. Uh covid testing and other things, and so we are also being quite intentional about where we're placing. Um and trying to lift up as much uh vaccine level resources as we as we can as well, and so there's a lot more to come from that. Um this will actually look very similar, so because we knew that these were the things that we we. That had to be there, they were present because they are longstanding issues in our community that we had to look for the ways in which this rollout. Um might be um also like unequally shared or contributed to by other members across the community. So we have talked about the fact that as we have looked at the people who have registered with the county so far. Um that certainly we see that pre-registration is lower in those nearly exact same zip codes. And so that requires a fully different community outreach level of approach to make sure that those opportunities. Um are there um and that the communities in these zip codes are aware, I will say that this has improved. Um the first time we looked at this map, I think within the first week or so of um of our distribution numbers. Um some of those numbers were at like one to two percent, almost everything was less than ten percent, so it it is improving and we are seeing more. Um of our residents in those neighborhoods um register with us, uh but there's still a long way to go to make sure that we are. Um making sure this opportunity is as effective as possible. And so when we think about what those levers are that we have to to increase the equity. Um in uh for the opportunity to participate in the vaccine, we have to increase awareness and willingness. This isn't a demand um of an opportunity, um this is not the kind of thing that we can and go out and say you just have to do this. You have to register with us, or you have to take this vaccine. Um but we do have to increase awareness and increase willingness, and that means that we have to. Um share the information that we have, we have to be prepared to ask questions about what we know about the science and the process and the concerns and address. The misinformation that's out there, uh Damon is not, we we have been talking about the the misinformation that we're already hearing. Um from members of the community, uh to be able to to speak to that and hear that, we have to facilitate access, whether that means we go somewhere. Um or we help bring someone to us, uh or we we get creative about those, we have to ensure that the supply is appropriate. There's some of that that we have control over, um and there it's unfortunately some of that that we don't, but we have to be honest about what we control and what we don't with the community as well. Um and we have to stand up a delivery network that's appropriate, if if we've got to come to the community, which we expect that we do. We've got to figure out how to build an infrastructure that lets us do that, so it has to be a delivery network that that has that appropriate piece and as. St. Louis DPH um continues to expand um and and grow this as the vaccine supply continues to increase. That those are the markers that we will be using to to continue to work to address this issue. Here though are some of our short and long-term goals in this area in particular, so um. For our most immediate goals, like we we know we have an audience that's fairly willing to receive vaccine. Um but does not know yet how to get access um or has limited access based on. Um their uh digital access uh or their ability to receive email uh or things along those lines, so. We are uh our North County partnership is working on where town halls um are being held. Um community outreach is very different in covid, um the health department, we used to participate in small community meetings, we went to churches. Uh when we had a rollout of a new program, we went to small-town hall meetings, we went to neighborhood watch programs. We went to a variety of different places where people would gather. Um without a lot of those gatherings, we're having to get a lot more creative about. Um use utilizing and partnering with stakeholders in the community that still have access to be talking to people. Um who uh connect us to opportunities to talk to people and to answer questions. And so uh we are also working at diversifying the advertising, so it can't just be that it goes out in the media. Um or or just in certain newspapers or things along those lines, it's got to go out on radio, it's got to go out in mail, it's got to go out in print in a variety of ways. So uh we have been um collaborating with our North County group to talk about like what are some of those other options for how we can get the word out. Uh and then really developing those plans for those with limited access, we can't let transportation be a variable. Um we can't let um you know, the the homebound or pop-up vaccination sites, if you don't want to come to one of the big centers, um then we we are. We'll be working over the next two to six weeks to make sure that we have more of these pop-up vaccination sites as vaccine becomes available. The long-term effort, like this is the real hearts and mind piece, um these are, this may be where we are talking about people who are distrustful. Whether it is of the vaccine or whether it is of healthcare in general, um or whether it is of governments or the health department. Um we have to continue to focus on building public trust um and having honest and courageous conversations about that. Uh and then continuing to develop and refine those plans for those who will still not have access even after we get into. Um those further months, there will always be groups um that that don't feel connected uh to the things that are doing, which means that. We're the ones who have to modify how we um how we facilitate that connectivity. Uh all of this um hopefully, uh as well as everything else that we do, continues to push us towards this this goal of reopening. Um and and really moving past this in our community, so we have to keep a constant feedback loop, as we talked about those community voices, we also have voices on. Um the the need for reopening um in a safe and responsible manner. And so listening to constituent voices and the people who email us with their concerns about what's happening. Um for their industries or for their schools uh and and how that's affecting them in their community. And then also reassessing as we still do um all the time, what is happening in case transmission in our community. Where is that being, um who is being affected by that, how do we continue to make sure that the case transmission is lowering? We are on a downward trend um at this time, which is fantastic, uh we are still over twice. Um the what is considered to be the very high level of community transmission um from the CDC. Uh that is down from the six times or so uh that we were of that um when we were in November and December. Um so we're making a lot of progress, uh but we do still have a lot of communication that's still. I mean, a lot of case transmission, there's still more than two hundred people that are testing positive every single day for covid, so. Um that has to be um how we protect people's health. Um as we continue to improve though, we start those responsible rollback of our protocols and guidelines, um so that we can have as much sort of. Unfettered activity as possible, um while we still stay safe, um but we also still do a significant amount of of support. For reopening businesses and schools, there are industries who've been particularly impacted, we've met with school superintendents and then a separate. Meeting with school nurses every week of the pandemic to make sure that we are always hearing, always available to them. Um for advice on everything that we know, um and to share with them how we think that they can best operate and everything that they say. Um about um how they want to move forward too, so those just continue. Um and so we provide that that really regular support. So a little bit about the logistics um and and operational plans, um there are two vaccines um that are currently available in the market. Uh DPH has only been receiving the Pfizer vaccine at this point because we are eligible to keep this cold storage. Um many people, you might have heard about cold storage and ultra-cold storage, so DPH has ultra-cold storage, uh which is much harder to maintain. Um but uh the Pfizer vaccine is a phase-three trial efficacy of ninety-five percent. Um that begins, uh you take a booster shot at twenty-one days and about seven days after that is when you are at your most efficacious. Um for being protected from getting sick um in case you are exposed to covid past that point. The population for the Pfizer vaccine are adults aged sixteen and over, so it is not yet approved for kids. Um it is not yet approved for children, um it is currently, this actually has just recently been adjusted as of Friday. In that they are removing the contraindications for pregnant persons, so they originally said. That it wasn't contraindicated, which meant that they they didn't think it caused a problem, they're actually being quite a bit more clear at this point. That they do in fact um are, it is safe for pregnant women and especially anyone who is pregnant who has a another medical risk condition. Um that also increases those opportunities, then it is in fact a good protective piece, the state also just modified. Um their uh measures this weekend uh to include that as well, so. This is a rapidly changing um situation, we do try to keep up with misinformation as quickly as possible and then turn it back around to the community. As fast as we can, but the constant change in information um is is very much a struggle to keep up with. We talk a lot about the cold chain management, it is it is it is no joke in cold chain management, so the Pfizer vaccine in particular. Um must be kept um within very specific temperature conditions. Uh we have freezers that are checked hourly uh in order to make sure that they are constantly maintaining that condition, we have very specific. Um methods um that we actually practiced for several weeks um with faith trace of vaccine to make sure that we were prepared. Um to handle the vaccine as safely and efficiently as possible, uh that we have no uh what are called excursions. Um to make sure that there is no vaccine to get wasted because we can't maintain the cold chain, so we are very picky about this. Uh and the network that we have put up for us and our partners. Maintains this level of quality so that no vaccine goes wasted. Sorry. So uh just back to reorient to this slide. And that the goal that we set for ourselves just to start with, how much should DPH? Get to just to get us going is at least five thousand vaccines a week. And it's got to get bigger than that, like as we move forward, but at least to get us started. So as of today, um and in this week, this is in fact the network that we have set up, so for the John C. Murphy site. St. Louis County Community College, Flor Valley, the three um fire EMS sites that will all be operable on Monday. Um DPH can do uh an estimated forty-eight hundred um vaccines per day uh or per week. And uh and we're continuing to grow, so all of these have expandable growth if we get more vaccine. Uh and I'll talk a little bit about what vaccine we're actually getting uh in a second. Um but DPH is capable of meeting that five thousand per week mark, which means we've got great room to grow. Cause all of our plans are about how we can expand for here, from here as soon as we get. Um as soon as we get more vaccine supply, we are ready um to to move from here uh to that, so. We we planned for uh trying to hit this mark, uh and we're completely ready to be able to deliver on this. Um every single week if we get a consistent supply of vaccine. This is a a huge enterprise for us though, so um it really starts with all the vaccinators that we've mobilized. We use a variety of DPH staff, the Medical Reserve Corps. Uh we've had a wonderful like outpouring of volunteer unaffiliated clinicians. Um we do have some contract staffing that we have worked with at the health department before, and we've been working with health occupation schools. Uh it isn't just a matter of, oh hey, you you've got a license, I'm just going to trust you to give medical care to the community, we do some due diligence. Um to make sure that we are are checking folks out, um signing up officially with um St. Louis County um as a volunteer. They go through training, we make sure they are vaccinated, uh and then we maintain them and schedule with them throughout this entire process. And trying to build it up in a way again that we can scale. This has been very productive so far and will continue to increase in that uh we currently have a hundred and eleven. have 111 vaccinators who've gone all the way through that process with us between staff and contractors and volunteers. And we have a couple of those health occupation schools that we're working into the process now. So this has to continue to grow so that we keep a really stable pool of the people who are out there prepared to vaccinate. But we, we've been very successful so far in having a good pool to draw from for the sites that we currently have. And it isn't just the vaccinators. There's about 50 people that it takes to run each of the major sites that we have up for, for all kinds of reasons to keep this a smooth, fast flowing process. I also want to make sure like, there's no like big groups of people that are standing in line at any of our sites. Like we wanted to make sure we were following our own COVID guideline rules and not having a lot of people in, in big groups who were waiting for this. And so we set this up in a way that people come in in small groups and then get moved through the process in as safe a manner as possible and keeping, keeping those social distancing measures in place. So it is a, a big enterprise. We're using a lot of our staff, a lot more volunteers who aren't capable of being providers, but certainly still want to help. And all of this helps get us to this, this sense of what the patients see. So if we get down to this patient level, people then pre-register online or by phone. It is, it is really necessary to register online if you at all have access. People have been thinking lately that they, if they call us, that that'll be sort of a faster access. That's not true. It does go in through the pre-registration system, but we do want those calls to be available for the people who don't have an email address or don't have access to a computer. We've been partnering with the County Older Residents Program, finding some other community partners who can help reach out to folks and then working on even more routes for people with, with no email access. Once you're in that pre-registration system, we will then, as we have doses available, we will send out opportunities to participate in appointments. So then you self-schedule from the link. And you can only sign up for one. And if no appointments are available, then we just ask people to check back later. And then you visit whichever site that you've selected. So previously before this week, you could only select John C. Murphy. Now you can select any of those five sites this week to choose which one is the most convenient for you to, to come get vaccinated at. This is a bit of the patient flow for when you arrive and hopefully, all of our experiences should look like this to each person. Patients often wait outside for a minute and then we ask them to come in so that we keep those small groups together. We have patients escorted in through the lobby. So this is, we're using John C. Murphy example, but we set Flore Valley up in a very similar way. We do a brief screening to make sure that we've checked your temperature. We get you through registration and all of those pieces. We move you back to one of our clinical areas. We review the entire formats and symptom screeners and everything else. There is an onsite physician to confirm if the vaccine is indicated in case you are concerned or you have questions about your medical condition and you want to talk to a doctor. And then we actually have the vaccination process and then we do monitoring. So this is a critical part of this that is also very different for this vaccine than like what you might see if you had a flu shot or something like that. Like that 15 to 30 minutes of monitoring is very important. So this is new. We want to make sure that anybody has any potential adverse reactions, that you're actually sitting under the observation of a nurse that entire time so that we can make sure that we're, we're fully ready to go in case you have an adverse reaction. It's 15 minutes if you don't have any history of reactions, but we might ask you to stay for 30 minutes if you have a condition or you've had a vaccine reaction before. And that will be determined by the physician and the nurse together. We offer you materials so that you can check in afterwards to make sure that you continue to feel fine or report any other conditions that you might have or any feelings or after effects after you leave. And then we, we help you out of the building and that's the process. We also during this time period, schedule you for your second dose automatically so that you know what your second appointment is and you're, you're fully ready to go. There is a massive documentation effort. Some of these are state programs we are required to enter into and some of them are federal programs we are required to enter into. So we do what's called Show Me Vax. That's the primary system for the state of Missouri. We report every adverse event that takes place. There's a whole list of exactly what it is that you might report of any potential adverse event that a patient may feel. We also have the V-Safe system, which is the, the daily check-in that you have if you have received a shot and you have a phone and you want to tell. So that's part of like the entire federal government sort of monitoring of this. We track all inventory throughout its entire piece and report that to the federal government as well as making all of our hours and capacity information available to the federal government as well. I will say that most of these systems being run by the state and federal, all of these systems are state and federal, which means that while I am aware of what DPH is putting into these systems, I am not aware usually of what anyone else is entering into these systems. So we do currently rely on the state's like vaccine dashboard in order to figure out who else is vaccinating and in St. Louis County residents, for example, and where they're vaccinating as much as possible. There's not a, a lot of information that's in great detail. Show Me Vax in particular has very limited ability to tell us what other people are doing. So that makes it very hard for me to report what's happening with St. Louis County residents who might go through a hospital system or when pharmacies get stood up and eventually go through the pharmacy system. And so I hope that information will approve and, and continue to flow, but it is managed currently in the state level system and it is not always as available to a local department like us to pull information back out in order to, to find out what's happening. So I have, I have more information about, of course, what we're doing than I do about what others are doing. So this is the, the slide about what DPH has done so far. And this is the supply where, slide where we also talk about vaccine supply. So while DPH is absolutely prepared to do 5,000 a week, DPH does not get 5,000 a week in vaccine. DPH does not have any control over the, the vaccine allocation process. We did receive our first 975 doses on January 5th, if you can see on the left of the screen. And then we began vaccinating those clinical workers in DPH. And then we started as we were building this system up and rolling all of those folks in who were in that 1A workforce. And then they began to open the 1B tiers right about that same time, I think right in the 14th or 15th timeframe. But we, we were running out of that 975 doses and we did not know at the time whether we would receive any additional doses. We certainly have ordered them every time. So we then did get a delivery from the state of 3,900 doses, if you can see in the middle of the screen, on January the 19th. And then we started to receive second doses. So I want to make sure I am clear about this. Second doses get sent automatically by Pfizer. They do not have to come out of our new doses of vaccine. If we gave you a first dose, we get delivered a second dose for you. So the new doses that we talked about are people that were trying to get their first dose to them. So we did get 3,900 doses on the 19th. Doses are sent out every Tuesday. So that really let us ramp up. As you can see, we really started to build. We started to increase the amount of access at John C. Murphy. We started to build Flore Valley out. We made that announcement. We were ready to go. Last week on the 26th, we were told by the state that we would not be getting a distribution of vaccine and we did not. So we did continue to operate and, and did continue to increase so that we could show, as you see on the 29th, like we did another 760 on that day. So we built a, a process that was really ready to go. I, we did find out also that the state did not allocate vaccine to St. Louis County Department of Public Health this week either. However, our local hospital system partners did decide to allocate some doses to us today. So they did send us 3,900 doses that were not from the state, but were from our local hospital partners who shared some doses with us so that we could in fact operate for this next seven days. We will open all of those appointments at every one of those five sites that I mentioned. We will open all of them and we will be fully out of doses again by the end of the day next Monday. And we will have to hope that we get vaccine at that point allocated from the state or potentially shared from hospital partners. The state has decided to prioritize hospital systems in all of the vaccine allocation that is going out. They have decided deliberately to deprioritize health departments, FQHCs, pharmacies, other community providers that would be available in that. So out of all of the vaccine that the state receives on a weekly basis, only 8% of any vac, all vaccines will be allocated to health departments statewide. So it isn't just us. It's every health department across the state. And there are National Guard sites. Those were predominantly targeted at rural places to begin with. After some of, so there are three sites that are operating in Regency. St. Louis County has asked, been asked to, to sort of step up into a coordinating position for those. Once those first three sites are done, I will be working to identify where those, those large National Guard sites should go from there. And so I do have the opportunity to move them for as long as the guard is active. We are not yet sure how long that will be. We do expect this vaccine supply problem to eventually, you know, begin to decrease and go away, but it is a, it is a heavily restricted commodity. And while the Health Department is, is fully ready to, to, to go and, and deploy and have built an infrastructure that is not only ready to, to be delivering now, but, but can scale pretty rapidly into the future, until the vaccine supply really comes in and is given to us, it will be difficult for us to, to meet some of these targets. But these are our goals and this is where we've been planning and preparing for, for this entire time. Vaccine flow will increase and we'll be ready. And we will make sure that those who are, are falling into some of the gaps will be our primary focus. And that's been our focus all along and it will continue to be that way. And those, those are really the, the place where we, we find ourselves at this point. So in the meantime, in our next steps, we will be continuing to have these community conversations out there, making sure that people are prepared. We will continue to, to work to pre-register people. We will work on improving our communication with those who have pre-registered. I will continue to escalate to the state the needs of long-term care facilities. If they, they do not invest us to deliver that, that vaccine to them, then, then it still does have to be addressed. And so right now, my, my primary position will be advocating for that. If they, if they invest in us to do it, we will, we will build a system to make it work and, and to, to be ready. And so, and every time I get vaccine, to just, to be executing and moving it out as fast as we can. And, and that's what's happening as the Health Department, as the health, hospital systems did send us vaccine today. We immediately mobilized. We're opening appointments. All the sites will go live for as long as we have vaccine. Another thing I want to make sure that everybody knows is that if you have an appointment at DPH, we have a shot for you. This is an appointment-only system because we did not want to be in a position of turning folks away by saying that we do not have a vaccine for you or we ran out. We don't want that to be the case. If somebody comes to us because they've got an appointment, it is because we have a shot for them. And we are, the doses earlier are also based on five doses per vial. We often are able to get six doses. There are no unused or wasted doses from DPH. We, we call folks and bring them in if there is a dose left at the end of the day. So this, this really is the, the state of where we are and the, the point at which we find ourselves poised to, to continue to move forward. So I will, that is the, the presentation. So we'll certainly open for your questions.
Thank you very much. Anyone, any council members with questions?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Fitch?
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm hearing echo.
I am too. Maybe everybody on mute except if they were talking. Okay, that sounds a little better anyway. Spring, slide nine, Missouri State Vaccine Allocation.
Yep.
Explain to us the supply chain. So Moderna, Pfizer makes this vaccine. They send it to the state of Missouri? And then what happens to it?
They don't actually. So it is a, it's kind of a paper-based allocation system. So the federal government, Operation Warp Speed says Missouri's allocation this week is 75,000 vaccine. You'll get 36,000 Pfizer and 36,000 from Moderna. And then the state goes through everyone that has ordered. And so the state like lately has been saying like, they, they get orders for more than 100,000 vaccines to be delivered, but they don't have that much. So then the state goes through and chooses who will receive which vaccine and in what amount. And then they tell that to the manufacturers and the manufacturers deliver it directly to the locations. So I put in an order of, you know, 3,900 or, you know, for next week, we put in an order of over 5,000. If that vaccine is delivered, it'll be delivered to be directly from Pfizer. There's no real like warehouse or like moving from one place to another. It is coming to us directly from the manufacturing, but it is an allocation system that is run between how much the federal government gave Missouri and then how Missouri decided to allocate it out.
Okay. Did I hear you say the Health Department is deep, or the state has deprioritized local health departments? We're only getting 8% of the vaccine. Is that, is that right? So if that's true, and you're ordering directly from the manufacturer, how does the state have their hands in this?
The state controls who gets the vaccine.
So they tell Pfizer and Moderna, St. Louis County only gets so much and Jefferson County gets so much. Is that right?
Yes, that's exactly right.
Okay. So the, the holdup, I think most people are concerned about what's taking so long to get this vaccine out there. Is it because the state can't get their hands on it from the manufacturer? Or is it there's some choke point in the state system that's holding this up?
So I would say that my understanding of this, and I, I participated in a ton of, of calls on this topic, is there are two big levers. And one is that the federal supply of vaccine is not entirely as advertised. And so it is not as big as, as everyone, like as, as it sometimes sounds in the news. So they are allocating like everything that is coming off as manufacturing and trying to get it into the system. The, my understanding is the pharmaceutical companies have indicated they have more capacity available. And I do know that the administration is trying to purchase as much of that availability as they can, that capacities they can, but it isn't present yet. And so Missouri is not one of the states that was performing at a level to get a high amount of vaccine and actually being able to get that vaccine out. And so they do have a restricted amount of vaccine that is given to Missouri. I will also say that Missouri has worked to try to figure out this allocation system and has made multiple modifications to it repeatedly and sometimes a couple of times within the same week. And so I think it is just a matter of how big these systems are and how hard it is to react. And everyone is reacting and it shifts everything. And it is confusing, but it is a, a both, a system that is not adaptable to these kinds of constraints. And then there, there just isn't enough vaccine yet.
Madam Chair, I'll hold my other questions. All others can ask them. Thank you.
Councilwoman Days, may I?
You're on mute, Councilwoman Days.
Councilwoman Dunaway?
Thank you so much. And I really appreciate getting to jump the line a little because I have to go get my kids in a few minutes from school. But Spring, thank you so much for this. And it's really terrifying and scary that we are getting so few doses compared to the demand. So what do we tell our constituents? Do we tell them that they need to be registering for the vaccine in multiple and throughout whatever hospital system they're in, as well as through St. Louis County, DPH, and anywhere that they can register, they should?
I would do that. And I would say that there's a difference between registering at multiple places and taking a bunch of appointments. So So I would register at multiple places because of the varying amounts of access, especially for the prioritization for hospitals, I would get yourself on multiple lists. But please only take one appointment.
Is there any kind of central tracking system? Like I don't know why anybody would go and get multiple doses or take multiple appointments, but maybe they don't know that they're not supposed to. How are we supposed to ensure that people who register at multiple hospital systems as well as DPH don't take appointments in each of those?
So I think the appointments will be difficult, but if, when you show up, we are entering you into Show Me Vax. If you've been vaccinated, that will actually kick you out. So I would be notified of that. But if you do take an appointment in multiple places, let's say you, you sign up that you're going to be at like here next Monday and you take an appointment at BJC like next Monday afternoon, like just in case, then both of us prepare a dose for you. So I do not recommend taking two appointments because both of us prepared a dose for you. And I will definitely find someone else to give it to, but it also meant that I didn't give a chance to give it to somebody else who could have taken that appointment.
And this will be my last question and then I'll let someone else go. But when you register online through the system, which I'm sure all of us on the council have done, how long will we get periodic emails, hey, we're still waiting for a dose for you? Or do we just hang and hope that we're still on some list somewhere?
No, we, we are starting that. We did not have it set up like from the original pace of this. And it was definitely a feedback that we heard loud and clear. And so we've been building out an email system to keep communicating to you. And we don't, we don't want people to, to go without hearing from us on that preregister. So we did hear it loud and clear that, that we do need to be, hey, we do know you're still on here, we definitely appreciate. We are still working hard on this issue. We can give you as many updates as possible.
Thank you so much and thank you, Councilwoman Daye.
Thank you. And I'd say here that a lot of people may not know, if they, if they're registering, they may think that they're making an appointment. I, I don't know if they really have the sophistication or the difference. I think that's what the, the councilwoman is trying to say that, you know, it's very confusing out there as to what we're looking at. So I, I will go on to someone else. Was that it? Councilwoman Dunaway?
I have some questions.
Yes, Councilwoman Dunaway, were you done?
Yes, I'm done. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Tracus?
Thank you. Spring, can you go back to slide 11 in your presentation, please?
Yes, sir.
All right, you've identified there in green what you called high-speed zip codes. And I'm, I'm interpreting that to mean that those areas are crucial, if not critical, to you in terms of getting the vaccine out in those areas. Is that a fair characterization?
Yes, sir.
So I'm obviously concerned with the small portion of South County that's highlighted in green. And I note that just today you've opened two fire departments, one in Affington and one in Melville.
Yes, sir.
Is that capacity going to be sufficient to address the need identified in that zip code?
Nope, we need to continue to grow. It is smaller in that zip code than, than, you know, the, the, the size of North County, but we, we do not think that the capacity of what we've got, we're not done here with the capacity that we'd like to build. So this is where we'll target more mobile pop-up and building a South County stakeholders group, which your office has been helping us with and I appreciate.
I know that, but I'm talking about facilities. What are your plans to open additional facilities in South County?
So we do have a couple of others that are both potential permanent sites as well as more mobile pop-up event-style sites. And as the vaccine continues to flow, we will have additional opportunities to do that as well.
What's the timetable for that?
So the timetable is, is heavily dependent on, on getting vaccine.
So you really can't give me a, a date, a range or anything like that?
Not until I have a stable, it's very hard to build infrastructure if the state does not give us any vaccine.
See, the problem I have with that is if you don't have infrastructure in place, how rapid are you going to be able to distribute vaccine when you get it?
So we, we do have like a whole collection of all potential sites. We've done walkthroughs of, of additional facilities. We have some other fire EMS partners that are in the works. We have targeted some places that could do a temporary event-style pop-up or something that could operate more regularly. So we, we've spent months sort of looking at a whole list of what was possible. And then when we started to get vaccine, we started with what were our best opportunities to get something stable up and running. And now we have the opportunity to go back to that list and look at how we build out what's further possible from here.
So let's, let's say that tomorrow you get a windfall of vaccines. How long is it going to take you to put this planned infrastructure in place and start vaccinating people?
If I get a big windfall of vaccines tomorrow, we would be starting about putting a mass vaccination event style up and we could probably lift that in about a week or so.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilwoman Daye? Yes, Councilwoman Webb?
Good, thank you ma'am. Mrs. Smith, I have a, a plethora of questions, but I'm going to try to reserve and pull myself back. Thank you for you and your team putting this together for us today. So it's at different levels and I'm going to start it actually administering the vaccination. So you mentioned that when we have, when you have vaccinations and person has an appointment, they have a dose for you, but you have limited dosage and that is controlled at our state level. As a servant of the community, what do I need to do to make sure that the state hears us and advocate for our community?
I, I am always happy for the, the advocacy of, of, of why public health departments are, are different. I understand why, you know, people may think that, you know, hospitals can do this massive infrastructure and capacity and, and they can, and they do a great job of that. Health departments are the groups who tend to, to look for the people who fall in the gaps and we can't forget that. And they tend to compare health departments as if we're all one type. So there's 114 health departments in Missouri and we all have very different skill sets. St. Louis County is the only one that runs clinical services. And so we are different and I, I am always, always happy for some advocacy on what we're capable of doing if they just give us a chance and the types of folks we are the most likely to reach out to.
So speaking of our senators and our state legislators too, reach out to them and speak up for behalf of our community, that's one thing that I'm going to do. And I was actually texting while you were giving your presentations to reach out to those leaders so they can help our community. And as you spoke of going into my second question, your Department of Health does service community members that fall in the gap. And as you can see from this map, which gets me a little touched. It's our communities in North County, Councilwoman Daye Chair, where the Days and myself in District Four, who have the bulk of the impact of these. And so I am concerned and the state had the rollout plan to address some of the senior residencies in our communities that did not receive it. So they fell between the gap and there's no plan for them to come back and cover them. So I'm looking at your, your health department to fill that gap for us. And then at the same breath, I'm saying, oh, you don't have, they're not giving you the doses just that you use because you don't have priority. And so to me, that's a catch 22 and I wish someone would take note of that and if we need to work to, to address it. The other concern that I have, oh, I'm sorry, go for it.
No, I was going to say, thank you, we would do.
It's, it, it is a, a great concern of mine. Along with that statement, looking at this map and looking at the communities that are highly impacted, impacted in our increasing their enrollment, but still is far, a big gap between our enrollment in our communities and other communities throughout the state. I do believe this is a trust factor and I am, I'm not going to sign up Councilwoman Daye for anything, but having it being a trust factor, being that we are the voices of our community, I would like to be used in any capacity needed to help build that trust and then have people, advocate for people to sign up. Because it is true, it is a trust factor in our community and they have to know that we trust this and we, they voted for us. And so I believe we have a certain level of trust in that, in our communities to speak up and have them come and sign up. So I am volunteering to do that, whether it's through public service announcement, literature, using our, using my image, whatever it has to be to make sure we are covered out here in North County. I want to make sure that we do that.
Thank you ma'am.
So please reach out to our office, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Daye, I didn't mean to say our office. That's fine. For you, but please reach out to our office so we can be that trust factor that you need in our communities. That's all that I have at this time. Very concerned, very concerned. And so whatever we can do to make it better, I want to do those things. Thank you, Chairwoman, for this opportunity.
Councilman Daye?
Anyone else?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Clancy?
Yes, I want to go back to some questions that Councilman Tracus had for you, Spring, about the infrastructure. How much do you estimate that DPH has spent to stand up the infrastructure you have in order to get vaccines to county residents?
So, well, I would, I would have a hard time sort of putting it off the top of my head, but we've already invested several million dollars in some of the, the staffing pieces and the infrastructure for our clinics. We did anticipate some of this with CARES funding last year, as I, I talked about in, in setting ourselves up with things that we could buy, such as the, the freezers. But now that we're into, you know, some of the staffing and the, the daily supplies and, and the complexity of what we're dealing with now, it, it, it expands rapidly. And so, yeah, it is, it's expanding daily.
So I've been following this closely at the state level because I understand what you've underscored today. The state is a linchpin in all of this. We have an important role to play in setting up the, the systems and processes and facilities necessary to get shots in people's arms. But if we don't have shots to give people, that stuff doesn't necessarily matter. But I want to check some of my notes with, with you about some of the, the money that the state has for this. So it's my understanding that in December, there was about 1.5 billion of appropriated CARES Act money left over at the state level that they spent on vaccine infrastructure and some additional money in the new federal aid package that they received in January. I could not gather how much that was. The Department of Health and Senior Services, which I believe is led by Dr. Randall Williams, is that correct?
Yes.
They have received, hang on, I'm pulling up my notes, 55 million in new funding for immunization and vaccines, is that correct?
Yes.
And they have also received 353 million in epidemiology and lab capacity for the prevention and control of infectious diseases, is that correct?
Yes.
So how much of any of that money has St. Louis County received?
None.
None?
Nope.
That is, that feels like a punch in my gut. We are the largest populated county in the entire state and you're telling me today we have received $0 from the state and we have received just under 5,000 doses from the state?
Yes, that's correct.
So I'm going to take it a step further than what Councilwoman Webb said. I think we need to bring Dr. Williams to the council to talk to us about this. And I'm going to be making that request this afternoon. It might be a little bit later because I see this hearing is going later, but I hope my council members will sign on to that request. We need some answers and I believe our, our neighbors in St. Louis City need some answers too. This is a regional problem and it feels like we're getting the short end of the stick here.
Yeah, we're, we're, health departments are definitely not alone in this space. And the whole region is in this boat.
Well, thank you for your presentation today. I'm going to leave my comments at that for now.
Thank you ma'am.
Anyone else with any comments or questions at this point?
Madam Chair. Councilwoman Daye?
Madam Chair.
Who was that, Councilwoman Fitch?
I was going, I think Councilwoman Harder called it. I just need to, I'll let you know that I have to sign off now. I have another matter that I have to attend to. But thank you for the presentation today, Spring.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for letting us know, Councilman Tracus. Councilman Fitch?
Ma'am, if I could defer to Councilman Harder, he hasn't asked it yet, he did chime in.
Okay, Councilman Harder.
Thank you. Spring, a couple of things. If we are not getting this vaccines from the state that you say we're not getting, who else is getting that here in the state? Is it the hospitals and the pharmacies? Are they getting more than what we are getting as from DPH?
So the pharmacies have not yet been given vaccine by the state outside of the long-term care facilities program. And my understanding is that they did take some of that vaccine back after the long-term care facility program was supposed to be done, even though we, as we know that it wasn't quite done. So the pharmacies are not currently a player. About 45 to 50% of all of the vaccine every week is delivered to hospital systems. And then about 23% or so of the vaccine is delivered to the National Guard for the mass vaccination sites that are predominantly happening in rural Missouri. And then eight percent of, and so this is about 6,000 doses a week, get shared among all 30 FQHCs in the entire state. And then 6,000 doses, which is also eight percent, get shared among all 114 health departments. That's 6,000 doses that are shared between 114 health departments every week. And then there is a potential 10% that is currently reserved for other community providers. We are not currently aware of any other providers in St. Louis who are receiving doses.
How much do you say the hospitals are getting?
They get about 45 to 50%. So like the hospitals this week in St. Louis County received 15,600 doses.
So what are they doing with it? If they've already vaccinated their staff, what are they doing with it?
They are vaccinating the public. They have been doing some preregistration and are starting vaccine clinics for the public on the current tiers as well.
And since we have a lot of hospitals here in St. Louis, is that why they're getting so much?
It isn't just the hospitals in St. Louis, it is hospitals across the state are getting the bulk of all vaccines.
Okay. And so you said before about encouraging people to sign up in multiple locations. Is that going to skew any of these numbers or make it difficult to give out the proper doses if we've got people and signed up in five different places and multiple counties and multiple locations?
We all base our doses on the appointment, not the preregistration. So the preregistration is okay, like it's just an opportunity to get you the information when we have an appointment available to you. It's the appointment that controls your dose. And so that's, that's the critical part. And so it, it is, it is a big system with a lot of other players and everyone's doing kind of their own thing, unfortunately. But, but it is the, the appointment drives the actual data.
The hospitals, I'm sure, are soliciting their customer base. And in St. Louis, that customer base could go out 100, 200 miles from St. Louis. If those people are traveling from rural areas coming into St. Louis to get these doses, that means someone else in St. Louis is not getting a dose. How are they going to determine that and do we determine that if people are moving around the state, going wherever the dose is available?
So the state has told all of the vaccinators that they do not want it jurisdictionally based. The state is predominantly focusing on the entire region. So for the eastern region of Missouri, that is, it is the entire region. So it is St. Louis City, St. Louis County, Jeffco, St. Charles, all the way, Lincoln County, Pike, Perry, St. Francis, St. Genevieve, Jeffco Franklin, Washington, there are 11. It is the entire region is being allocated as a whole.
What about people coming in from Illinois? Are they? What about people coming in from Illinois? Are they, are they able to get?
So the state has, the state has made a distinction about that, um, to a certain extent in that they did say that it was for Missouri residents, um, predominantly. Uh, there, there aren't a lot of systems to, to over, you know, to, to be, to catch that, but it is, the state did make that distinction, yes.
And what is your goal to vaccinate the people of St. Louis County in total? What is your number that you need for herd immunity in St. Louis County?
So the expected potential for herd immunity for COVID-19 is 80%. So we need nearly 800,000 people vaccinated.
Uh, the county executive said 70% a week or so ago. So which number is it?
So, um, the 70% is where we typically try to get to, um, with any vaccine. That's a pretty standard number. Um, but for like a full return to normalcy, it's more specific to COVID-19, uh, they are hoping for 80%. But that is, that is a, an estimate, um, based on, so 70% is a fairly standard way in which we describe herd immunity for almost all vaccines.
And 70% of the population of St. Louis County is what?
About 700,000 people.
Okay. And then finally, are you counting people that have had COVID and have the antibodies in that number? Or are you just going for vaccinated amount?
Yes, actually those folks are still recommended to get the vaccine.
So you're not counting them as being covered if they've had COVID?
No.
Last year?
Not necessarily, no. It is still recommended.
So you're going to try to get 700,000 doses and we're to get them, and we're trying to get them at 3,000 doses a week? Or your goal was 5,000?
My goal is 5,000, um, because I'm, I'm not the only, you know, partner, uh, in this. So as, if the hospitals and pharmacies and others like really start to vaccinate too, like we're, we're capable of a lot. Um, and that's just the 5,000 is just our starting point. We're capable of more.
So we're going to take about, uh, 100 and, if I'm math is right, 140 weeks to get through at that pace?
If we're by ourselves, um, and, and we still get 3,000, I, we're not going to say it at 3,900 doses like we, um, the, the, we do believe that the federal system will increase, um, the pipeline of doses that are being delivered.
And finally, I heard that there's another company, I think Johnson &amp; Johnson is coming up with that dosage. Uh, it, when do you see that hitting the market, uh, to be used?
It has not been, so they just publicized their efficacy numbers, which are about 65%. So it is still pretty good, um, as far as vaccines. That's better than the performance for like the, the flu shot, but, um, is not quite as good as the Pfizer and Moderna vaccines. Uh, it is also a one-shot dose, um, which is great. The FDA has not given it its EUA approval yet. Um, and so that will be the, I'm, I'm, I can't predict when the EP, the, uh, FDA will do that though.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair?
Anyway, uh, Councilman Fitch?
Thank you. Uh, Spring, could you go to slide three or slide 19? I think they're identical. Uh, either one, whichever one you're closest to.
Yeah.
They are identical?
Yep.
Okay. So help me understand this in the top line, uh, DPA, DPH, uh, set them network to deliver 5,000 doses a week.
Yep.
And if we go down to the third bubble from the left, it says 21,000. I, I'm trying to understand, is it 5,000 a week or 21,000 a week? Help me understand this slide.
So it's DPH versus all of St. Louis County residents. So like, let's say DPH is like a quarter of the whole market and hospitals and pharmacies and others take up 75%. Then they'll do the other 16,000.
Okay. So if we're doing countywide, 21,000 a week?
Yep.
And we want to get this done in 14 weeks, is that right?
So it's 21,000 a week and that will help us have 300,000 people vaccinated in 100 days.
Which would be by May.
Yep.
Which is still less than half of what we need for our herd immunity.
It is. And, and that's why I think many of us have talked about sort of this overall vaccination process needing to get to, um, it, that it would be summer before we were able to get to like the majority of the population. And if the vaccine flows, the entire system is capable of more.
Okay. So summer is our ultimate goal to have most people that want the vaccine to be inoculated, is that right?
If we get enough vaccine to make this work.
Okay. And tell me about the two doses. Are they identical physically? Are they identical, dose one and dose two?
That is a very good question and I wish Dr. Seth was here for that. I believe that they are. Um, it is a booster dose. Um, I believe that they are, but I am.
And originally I answered, and believe it or not, I actually got an email asking about a second dose. If they went to a site where they were giving first doses, if it made a difference. And I said, let me ask.
I don't know. I don't believe so, but I will, I will check on that and make sure that I give you the very exact technical answer.
Okay. My one last question, uh, Chairwoman Day. Uh, I have a elderly, low-income housing project in, um, apartment complex in Kirkwood. And their question, their email to me today was, how do we get vaccines into our, our residents when they have no cars, they can't go to one of the mass sites, they can't get out and go to, uh, one of the DPH sites? How do we do that?
So, uh, first, let me, um, just, uh, go back. They are exactly identical. So you can go to another place and just get one of the first doses and that could be your second shot, but you should tell them it's your second shot.
Okay.
Um, and then, um, in terms of that, that's where we're trying to, we're trying to stand up a, a mobile, um, sort of clinic site that can, or a mobile clinic team that can travel around to this. And, and this has been us reacting to us finding out that the state did, did not in fact cover all the folks that we thought they would cover.
And how about Medicare and Medicaid patients? Uh, is there any special, uh, provisions for them or they, they're handled like everyone else?
No, everyone else.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Spring.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else with any questions? I want to get us out of here by 4:30 at least, but I do have several questions and comments, Spring, that I want to, uh, talk to you about. First of all, I noticed that this, this whole slide presentation is initial draft. Uh, I want to make sure that when, when you give the, is this official? Is this what we're going to be doing? Is this what we can work from? I need, I need to know that. Um, second of all, I would like for you to present us with a plan for your community outreach. What does that entail? Is that radio? Is it television? Uh, is it daughter? What are we doing? Uh, uh, we would like to have a specific plan of what your community outreach is. That goes to the question from Councilwoman, uh, Webb's, uh, uh, outreach and how, what, what we can do to assist that process. But we don't know what your plan is. We need to, we need, we can weigh in on that. Um, I want to go to, uh, the second thing is I'm going to strongly suggest that, wow, this is the reason we had the, uh, human, human services, um, here because hopefully you can coordinate with them as we're looking at the vulnerable communities and, and looking at the housing instability that you can coordinate with them, uh, and, and getting these vaccines to the people who want them or need them or whatever that situation would be. But I think that would be advantageous for you to hook up with them and make sure that, 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 that happens. Uh, the third thing I want to talk about is that, is, is the number of people that we are hearing that are getting these vaccines that are not necessarily in your one and two tier, whatever that means. Uh, you know, we have people on Twitter that's saying that they got the vaccine. They are not one of the vulnerable communities. They are not a first responder, uh, but yet they're advertising that they did receive those. And that's a problem for me because if we have people, first of all, for first responders, all the first responders have not gotten their vaccinations. And I, I've been told that. Um, and so secondly, when you look at these other folks, for instance, the county, I believe now county residents are taking priority over some of the first responders. And so I need to make sure that that's, you know, if that's happening, that's inappropriate. We shouldn't have these folks jumping in front of each other when you have first responders, you have people in nursing homes, you have assisted living people who have not been vaccinated yet. And, and to have these people go out of line, it, it, it's just not, um, it's just not appropriate. I did read, and please correct me, that, that we, we shared some vaccines with Franklin County or Jefferson County or one of the other counties. It was reported in the paper that we were sharing our vaccine. Is that correct?
No, ma'am. We set a mutual aid agreement like in place that if we ever had additional vex, extra vaccine, we would share. We have never had extra vaccine and we have not transferred any.
Okay. Well, I, I don't know if that's how it came across in the paper, but it did say that you were sharing with another county. And if we don't have enough for our own county, I don't know how that's happening.
Well, we.
You mentioned, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Uh, just in, in terms of that, so we have also had several thousand Jefferson County residents who have signed up on our pre-registration and the Jefferson County first responders had asked to participate in our first responder process. So we set up a wholly separate lane for first responders that was only for first responders. And that's, so they had a, a, basically a, a, a private lane for first responders that was not the same while we were lifting the access to the public at the same time.
So have all of our first responders in St. Louis County, police, ambulance, uh, paramedics, have all of those been, been vaccinated?
Not all of them are through the process yet, but all of them that, um, we, that have pre-registered with us and we had over 4,000 on our pre-registration from every single muni, um, police to some of the additional state police that are, um, here and, and everyone else that we could find. And, uh, they all have been sent invitations. Um, several of them have been vaccinated by us already. Uh, and then SLU SSM Health, um, has worked with us and then we did all their pre-registration and they're working through. They said it'll take about 18 days for all 4,000. And then all the hospital systems vaccinated fire EMS.
Okay. And one other thing, I believe I meant, I heard you mentioned the fact that you call the state and you order what you're saying you need. Did I hear that correctly?
Uh, it's a, it's an email, but yes.
Well, I mean, whatever, however method you use, but you're ordering what we, what you think we need in St. Louis County. And so the last order you had was 3,900, that, that's what you ordered?
Uh, that was what we ordered three weeks ago. Uh, we've been ordering over 5,000 ever since, but we have not been, we ordered like 5,000 yesterday, but that is not what we get delivered.
Okay. So because we got 3,900 today, didn't we? I think that was a, 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 a press release that went out, we got 3,900 today?
But that was not from the state. It was because the hospitals shared some with us so that we could operate. We did not get any from the state this week.
Okay. And I know that that's a concern that we're not getting what we need to get from the state, but I'm not, I'm, it's something there is, is not quite working well in, in terms of how we're doing that. So are you advocating or how do you, because we, we look at you as, as our advocate, uh, in terms of St. Louis County and what we should be getting. So how, how are you advocating to them?
Um, nearly every day. I talk about the capacity that we have. I talk about the, the constituents that we're trying to reach. I talked about long-term care facilities and if they would just give us the vaccine that we could help them, um, we will figure out how to get in there. We'll send people in with PPE and vaccine, um, if they would please only do that. Um, we communicate to them nearly daily. They know what we're capable of.
Okay. Well, the last thing I want to say, uh, you know, we continue to talk about our vulnerable communities. We talk about our high need areas. You know, we, we do all of this talking about this, but I, I hope this does not wind up as the testing did, uh, in our communities, not just being, not just having what we need in order to, uh, to, to get ourselves through this pandemic. I, I hope that is not the case because we have seniors who are, we have disabled people who are homebound and, and they're not, as I think it was, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Fitch mentioned that, might've been, uh, how, how are these folks, you know, getting out to get these kinds of, of, uh, get the services that they need. So with that, I will, um, see if anyone else has any questions. Uh, Councilwoman Harder, I see your hand up.
Yeah, just a couple to, uh, if you go to that slide that showed the tier system, I think it was slide one or two.
Uh, the one or two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Spring, of these three tiers in blue, how much are actually totally vaccinated? What percentage in those tiers are vaccinated by now in St. Louis County?
So I actually have no way to determine that. I know how many people are still registered with us. Um, and so that's this slide that I have here. So I know that there are still almost 12,000 healthcare workers, um, who have not been vaccinated yet and are still registered with us. We have 5,000 people who are currently being scheduled that are finishing out emergency response. Uh, and then this, this 116 plus 60,000 people in Phase 1B2.
So we're not even through A1, even healthcare workers yet that you can say all the healthcare workers are covered?
No. Um, the original estimates from the state were that there were only a couple thousand people who were not attached to a hospital system. And so they thought that they would be covered by hospitals, but that was actually not the case when we opened up registration.
So are we at 50% in healthcare workers? 60, 80?
Uh, no, uh, it's better than that. Uh, for healthcare workers, there's about 11,000 people in there. They estimated that the size for St. Louis County was originally between 50 and 75,000.
Okay. So that's, you know, that's 6%, 8% maybe?
Yep. And, uh, we are, um, so all of the first responders that I'm aware of, we are working on Public Works is the last group that we're trying to get scheduled. Um, but law enforcement is done, so that's about 500 to 1,000 people for Public Works. So all of the first responders, um, the non-patient public health infrastructure, everyone, um, those has at least gotten, um, if they wanted it, a, a schedule. Uh, and then we're still working on Public Works and other people who've been identified as emergency services sectors.
Why do you keep expanding into the next tier when the tier ahead of them hasn't even been satisfied?
Because some of the people in the next tier are also at severe high risk. And so we are still, that is, um, when we talk about that tier two population, the state opened it and made it available. And we are talking about people who, whose, whose jobs make them vulnerable, which is why we set up, we set up a different system for 1B Tier 1, so that we were helping first responders separately while also starting to help some of these members of the public who have some really extreme health conditions, um, are very vulnerable and still also vaccinating some of the 1A healthcare workers.
So you're basically attacking three tiers at once?
Yes.
And, and hoping to get some kind of herd immunity out of one of those?
I, otherwise it would mean that everyone waited, um, and, and didn't get access at all. And so, um, we, we decided that we would rather begin to provide some access, um, to, to all three open tiers, um, instead of, and, and instead of just making everyone wait until we could get finished.
Okay, thank you.
Well, uh, Spring, then, then who makes the decision if you jump from Tier 1 to Tier 2 or 1A B or, how, how is that determined?
So, uh, this.
I'll go back to the, my original question about some people jumping the line here who are not necessarily in any one of these categories.
People that are not in these categories should not be being vaccinated at all. And.
Wait a minute now, but we have county residents that are jumping over first responders because I think we just got the information that county, county employees can go and be vaccinated. I think we just got that in the email.
County employees can only be vaccinated if they fall within those tiers. So it's only county employees who are over 65 or who have identified that they have a medical condition. And, or that, we have a lot of county employees that fall into that 1B Tier 1. All of Public Works, the county police, um, the public health staff, justice services all fell into 1B Tier 1.
Okay. Well, and so you make, the, the bottom line is you make that decision on who, who jumps. So whatever, we go from 1 to 1B, 2-tier, whatever that is. So you make that decision. That's, that's my question.
We decided to open all three tiers, yes. Um, but we did not, um, we made sure that the public-facing tier for like 1A workers in Tier 2, um, was separate than what we did for the, the public sector workers that fall into Tier 1 as emergency services. But you have to meet the tier condition. So if there's a county.
You know, I, I guess I'm looking at people who are working from home. Um, you know, we have several departments that are working from home, but I know some of those people have gotten the, uh, gotten the, uh, the vaccination because they bragged about it on, on, on Twitter. Okay. Um, any other questions? Any other questions?
Yes, I have just a couple of follow-ups.
Sure.
Um, Councilwoman Day, is I think what you're, I think what I'm hearing from you and what, and what I'm hearing from Spring, you're concerned that there's people in 1B Tier 2 and 1B Tier 1 that are getting vaccinated when there's still people in 1A that aren't? Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, and, and what I'm hearing from Spring isn't necessarily that people are jumping the line. We're just expanding the pool now of who is, um, who's eligible to get vaccines at this point in time, correct, Spring?
We tried to make a line for everyone.
Okay.
One for each tier.
And how many, how many weeks was, was it just 1A before you expanded it to open it up to 1B Tier 1 and then Tier 2? to 1B Tier 1 and then Tier 2?
So I didn't make the expansion from 1A. It was opened by the state in December when they first began delivering vaccine to the hospital systems. But we did not get vaccine to start vaccinating anyone until January 5th. And then the next week, the state opened Tier 1 and Tier 2.
Okay, so that's important because I think what Councilwoman Daze may have heard was that it was your decision then to say, we are going from 1A to 1B Tier 1 and 2.
I did decide to allow other people in Tier 2 because we have a lot of medical conditions and I did decide to start vaccinating first responders.
And if you hadn't done that, we would have had a lot of people probably saying, I have a pre-existing condition, get me my shot now. First responders have had time, they still can get their vaccine, but please, I mean, I just feel like you would have gotten grief no matter what decision you would have made there. You have a lot of hard decisions to make right now. And I just want to, I appreciate that. I mean, we all do going through this pandemic. I guess the other, well, you and I have even had some, you know, some one-on-one conversations about this because I have also been aware of people who aren't actually even in 1A or 1B Tier 1 or 1B Tier 2 who have gotten vaccinated. And we talked about what could possibly be put in place to prevent that from happening. And I think initially I talked to you about, well, can we have people provide paperwork to prove their eligibility? And you shared with me something that I hadn't thought about, that actually making people provide paperwork to prove their eligibility has a disincentive on some of our most vulnerable populations, including our disabled populations who often have disabilities that are hard to document or that they don't have paperwork for necessarily. So when I heard that explanation from you, I thought that it made a lot of sense. And, you know, again, I realize how much thought you all are putting into this and it's not easy. I did see one thing though, in your slides, that I feel like is kind of a safeguard from people jumping in line, and that is that you are making the link that you send to people, a one-time-use link so that people can't forward the appointment link to people, other people that they know. Is that correct?
So we are actually trying to build that out. We have had that. That's inappropriate. It's not what we ask people to do. It's not what we tell them to do. People have misrepresented whether they qualified in these tiers, but if we find out that's the case, then they're disinvited. But the state opened all these tiers and they definitely opened Tier 1 and Tier 2 at exactly the same time. And we did not want everyone to have to wait.
So my last question sort of is, is I'm thinking about again, some of the state-level decisions that have been made that obviously impact us, and that is how the state is focusing now and prioritizing distributing vaccines to the hospital system. And it seems to me that that actually could have an inequitable impact on our most vulnerable populations because we know that so many of our most vulnerable populations depend on federally qualified health centers and the Department of Public Health as their safety net and health safety net in many ways. So I guess I just wanted your thoughts on if that is going to make this harder to reach our most vulnerable populations in some ways?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I want to talk to the state about that hopefully as well. I'm concerned about that.
I am too.
All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Harder?
You know, I'm just thought of something and I have to piggyback on what Councilman Nancy said. If the hospitals are getting the lion's share of the doses, are they charging for these doses compared to the DPH giving these doses out for free?
So no one should be charging a person, period. However, the federal government did allow an administrative fee to be charged if you have commercial insurance or if you have Medicaid, where you can charge the fee to the federal government in a pool of money that they gave. No person should be charged money.
But if you're at a hospital and a customer for XYZ Hospital and you're going to get your shot there, are they going to upcharge it to your insurance company so that hospital makes a piece of that compared to what we get, which we're giving out for free to vulnerable populations?
So we are also capable of charging that administrative fee and we are trying to do that. Sir, if you were in my head and thinking about what we could claw back from the federal government that they should pay, they do have a pool of money that is available for people who have no insurance, which is primarily the people that we serve. So we won't charge people. But we are setting up an infrastructure so that we can build a federal government to give us a little bit of that administrative feedback.
No, I get, I think you're twisting what I'm thinking here is that from the standpoint that the hospitals have more doses because they're going to turn that around and make some money out of it. And then we get the scraps that come through DPH for what the hospitals, because you already said that the hospitals have pretty much at least half of the inventory of doses right now. So if they're making money on it, we're not, you know, there's where it's going.
Yeah, I honestly have a thought about the profit margin of vaccination. We've just been working and trying to make sure that we could do it. And I don't know.
Okay, just something to think about.
Thank you. Thank you, Spring, for your presentation. Let me ask you one last question. When can we expect a plan for your community outreach? We would really like to see that sooner rather than later so that we can see where we can fit into that process.
Sure. Dame and I will put our heads together and we'll make sure that we get you a date and a timeline and some information about that very soon.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Any other questions before we move on or discussion before we move on to public comments? I do believe, do we have any public comments, Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am, we have eight public comments.
All right. Proceed, please.
Do you want me to proceed? Okay.
Proceed.
Yes, ma'am. So our first public comment is from April Lenenbauer. My name is April Riley Lenenbauer and I live in 63043. I am ashamed that I live in St. Louis County because of the underhanded antics of some of the county council and Sam Page. First of all, it was bad enough that Ernie Trachis had a sexual misconduct claim paid off and swept under the carpet for $60,000, signed off by Sam Page, perens, one vote bought and perens. Then he scammed his way into illegally setting up the county council to slant his way in 2021 by fraudulently having his attorney Beth Orwick state it was fine to have someone that was no longer a council member to vote for council chair. That person then, a couple of weeks later, was given a position paying $89,000 for which she has no qualification to perform. While this three-ring circus is going on, the council is suing the rest of the council for holding a legal vote for council chairperson. Meanwhile, there has been no plan released for the COVID vaccine distribution. Just Sam Page jumping in front of others, saying it is because he is medical staff. In fact, the company that he has, his other job that he is not supposed to have, according to the charter, vaccinated all of their employees and family members. Then he has the audacity to go on TV and accuse teenagers of line-hopping to receive a vaccination. What a joke. We are wasting so much money on legal fees, consulting fees, and now payroll to get nothing done. The only thing Sam Page and the Health Department has accomplished to date is to put a lot of people out of work during the holidays and many businesses out of business forever. Then he thinks he is doing us a favor by giving us one extra hour to eat or have a drink. You are unbelievable and this council needs to get control of this monster and get some checks and balances in place. It is currently going in the right direction for the council. Four out of five of the council members that are being sued are balanced and have the well-being of the people they represent in the forefront. Not some kind of payoff by Sam Page, be it an out-for-sexual harassment charge or paycheck for an illegal vote. Please, I beg you to stop this nonsense and, Madam Chair, that is 400 words. Moving on to Matthew Murin. I'm a resident of Richmond Heights and I'm the 2021 President for St. Louis Realtors. On behalf of the 8,000 members of St. Louis Realtors, I want to thank you for prioritizing and unanimously passing the authorization to receive the Federal Emergency Rental Assistance Grant three weeks ago. I also want to thank you for moving with speed on this legislation in order to distribute this money quickly as across St. Louis County renters struggle to make rent payments while housing providers struggle to make ends meet. Housing providers and renters cannot continue without this relief. More than 40% of all rental properties are owned by mom-and-pop investors, many of which invested in real estate to help fund their retirement. Now, as mortgage, insurance, and tax bills mount, while housing providers remain responsible for general property maintenance, rental income has become less and less reliable. As a result, many are deferring non-essential maintenance, placing properties at risk both physically and financially. Owners are struggling to keep properties afloat while renters face eventual eviction and displacement due to their inability to repay rental arrears, but rental assistance funds can help avoid these circumstances. More than a third of U.S. households live in rental housing. Property owners have been bearing the brunt of the costs associated with the federal eviction moratorium, keeping families in their homes throughout the pandemic while receiving minimal rental income. Please help protect these county residents and our critical housing stock by swiftly deploying rental assistance funds, ensuring this healthcare crisis does not become a housing crisis. From Jenny Hogg. Good afternoon. My family lives in the 63128 zip code. I'd like to ask a few questions about former councilmember Rochelle Walton Gray being hired as the COVID-19 Vaccine Community Outreach Coordinator. What qualifications does she possess that suit her for this role? Was this job posted for the required amount of time for all St. Louis County government jobs per the requirements in our charter? How many candidates were interviewed? Finally, what political ramifications for St. Louis County residents could come from Ms. Walton Gray in this role? Essentially, I'm wondering what say she will have in pushing, what say she will have in pushing forward council affairs with which the constituents do not agree? I'm sure you can understand my consternation as several council members just recently acted in their own self-interest by not allowing Shalonda Webb to vote on the council chair position, a vote that was rightfully hers. And from Will Jordan, the Executive Director at the Metropolitan St. Louis Equal Housing and Opportunity Council. The Metropolitan St. Louis Equal Housing and Opportunity Council writes in support of implementing rental assistance relief programs for county residents. The first round of CARES Act rental assistance undoubtedly stopped hundreds or thousands of evictions of tenants and foreclosures on landlords for the past nine months. Nevertheless, countless residents financially impacted by the pandemic continue to be at risk of being evicted and foreclosed upon. If the county does not act quickly to provide rental assistance to those in need, St. Louis will likely see dangerous and unprecedented mass homelessness with devastating social, economic, and public health consequences. The use of rental assistance has been a lifeline for struggling residents and the organizations that support those residents, including EHOC. In response to the COVID-19 eviction crisis, EHOC created a new eviction defense program to provide legal support to eligible tenants facing eviction or risk of eviction. Since August 2020, this program has worked with nearly 400 tenants to provide advice and legal representation. Nearly all of EHOC's eviction prevention work has relied heavily upon the use of rental assistance funds to keep residents housed and safe. Without the availability of rental assistance funds, EHOC and its partner agencies would be extremely limited in our abilities to dampen the pandemic's unrelenting effects on housing security and public health. Implementing and continuing a rental assistance program is necessary to prevent homelessness and the spread of COVID-19 throughout St. Louis. We urge you to take action accordingly. And from Stevie Stenger. Happy Black History Month, or is it a happy one for blacks? Sammy Lee handpicked his auditor. How many investigations have been done on pandemic spending outside council, sexual harassment settlements, the procurement process? Where are we with the jail investigation that was overseen by Jennifer Joyce? Why were there no questions about why we went with someone handpicked to lead the pre-investigation when handpicking Raul Manasco didn't go so well? Where are we with the county equity audit? Wish it, with it, you could create a roadmap to address the glaring systemic racism in St. Louis County. Cindy Brinkley insisted on inclusion while she was over the pandemic program. Did St. Louis County meet their stated goals for 2020? Where is the report for 2020? According to the ordinance, it is due. Given that the NAACP has been heavily subsidized by Page's food delivery, they are conflicted out on speaking on these issues. Is the diversity bill fully implemented yet? Todd Martin said that you all were in compliance in October, but how is that possible if the bill wasn't fully implemented then? Sam Page knows that if the bill is implemented, that the St. Louis Labor Council would have a fit, but where is that bill at in the implementation process three years later? Does Sam have to call Pat White to see if it is okay to move that forward too? If you didn't know, Sam has to call Pat to see who he can appoint as the Chief Diversity Speaking of the charter and ordinances, I think the counselor would find that you all are not in compliance on a number of levels dealing with minority inclusion. I hope the Human Rights Commission is ready to fully investigate the breadth and depth of the constructive discrimination that takes place in St. Louis County. County Council, I implore you to meet with them and give them the resources they need if Beth, the consigliere, doesn't prevent that. Is chief no systemic racism gone yet? Speaking of which, it seems like we need a new police board since we lost Dr. Punch, the only one concerned about progress as opposed to the appearance of it. These issues impact blacks and minorities daily. Please answer this at tonight's meeting. What has changed for blacks and minorities in St. Louis County since August 9, 2014? And from Cindy Winkler. Cindy Winkler, 4th District here. Will vaccines that go to doctors' offices be distributed from county, state, or otherwise? Do you know? Obviously, those of us in the 4th District find the appointment of our former holdover councilwoman to a job at the county a little suspect. Who in this group that was recently formed has actual logistics experience? It is great that the nonprofits are willing to help, but it seems like you just overloaded the kitchen with cooks and two expensive chefs. Finally, with wanting the rent assistance to be immediately appropriated as a grant, how can you assure the public that 10% allowed for admin fees won't be misspent? Can the council have some legislative oversight on that? And from Jennifer Herndon, 63122. I have some questions that I'd like answered, Dr. Page, and if you refuse to provide answers beyond your typical political doublespeak, I ask the council members to press Dr. Page for the answers. It is obvious that Dr. Page and some members of the council have forgotten that you are elected officials, which means you are chosen by the people to represent us. We pay your salary. The purpose of your office is not to push your political and financial agendas, but to push the will of the people, even if you disagree with it. My concerns for today's meeting surround the hiring of Rochelle Gray as a COVID-19 Vaccine Community Outreach Coordinator. While I have many questions, here are the most pertinent ones for now. One, what did the hiring process for this position look like? By this, I mean, was the job advertised? Were resumes submitted? If so, how many people were interviewed and how was the decision made? Number two, how did Ms. Gray become a candidate for this job? Did Page approach her or did she approach Page? Number three, how was the salary for this position determined? You are accountable for the way you spend my tax dollars and any CARES Act money, remember. Four, what specific qualifications does Ms. Gray have for this position? Five, what specifically will Ms. Gray be doing specifically? Six, did Page and Gray have conversations about her securing a job in county government before her council seat ended on December 31, 2020? Seven, if Gray had not aided Page in his illegal and unethical attempt to have Clancy reelected as council chair, would she have received this job? Eight. And finally, on behalf of all of the small business owners who have gone under or are on the verge of losing our businesses due to Page's politically motivated and scientifically void restrictions, do you have any jobs for us and where can we apply? I know you think you are accountable to no one and will not answer my questions today, but the tide is turning away from but the tide is turning away from your unconstitutional practice of ignoring anyone who questions you, so you might want to get some answers ready. And as I am sure many would like to know the answers to these questions, I would suggest you post them on the county's Facebook page. And our final comment this afternoon comes from Shannon Robbins, Robinson, six, three, oh, two, five. Two weeks ago, the council passed a resolution demanding the Department of Public Health to show us their plan to roll out vaccines. It seems they have only showed us an overpaid spokesperson who was voted out of her district with zero qualifications. My first question is, when will the council demand an investigation on the reason Ms. Gray was actually hired? In October, I wrote in and specifically asked why Ms. Gray always voted the same as Clancy. My question, my questions to her was this. Is it because Page has promised you a six-figure job after your term? I have lost all faith in our county and our DPH, and especially in those that claim to have our best interest at heart. If this isn't a reason for an investigation, I am lost as to what else would be. On an equally, equally serious note, I have some concerns about the lack of organization this county has shown when it comes to the vaccine rollout. Other counties already have drive-up options. It appears our county was surprised a vaccine showed up. Many have been waiting for this for months. My grandmother has literally locked herself in her townhome until she can get the vaccine. Lack of communication and organization, as well as throwing away vaccines at the end of the day, has been frustrating to say the least. These are the questions that citizens want answered. What does the timeline for distribution look like at this moment? What is the process for the county receiving and distributing vaccines? Do they order them or just accept what the state gives us? How do they decide who gets priority? Or is it a first registered, first dosed scenario? Where will they be administering doses? How will they determine when to set up other distribution sites? When we get more doses, when, when we get more doses, when we have funding? Will we get more doses when we have more funding? Does the county have any role in distribution for any doses in the county besides the ones they receive from the state? Is every vaccinator independent? What do you do with leftover vaccines? Most importantly, what is the goal for vaccination? Percentage of total population? Coverage of certain demographics? Until demand stops? We need transparency. We need the DPH and Mr. Page to stop moving the goalposts. We expect more from our county. Do better for your citizens. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Diane. Any other comments or questions before we end? All right, thank you so much. Uh, I need, um, um, motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
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 In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you very much. See you at six-thirty.
Right.